Good evening, Smithtown, and thank you for joining us tonight. On this National Flag Day, would everybody please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Let's just have to say, this is always the best time of the year. As school year finishes up, you're able to see all the different accomplishments across all the buildings, seniors, their excitement for what's to come and the pride of what they've accomplished. And there's so many great things going on throughout the district. I hope we're doing a good job highlighting those things, and I hope that you're able to see not just what's happening at the building, maybe your kids attend or where you live, but across the district. Because as we've had presented here throughout the last several months with our different athletes, not athletes, but student athletes, and different clubs, there's so many talented students and great accomplishments that we really want to try to highlight and recognize those as much as possible. We have another robotics team, which I'm excited about later on, we'll get a chance to see them. And I don't know if you were at Smithtown Day, but they were there with their booth and able to speak about what they've done and what they do and how they compete. And they were telling my little younger guys about Legos and how they can get involved in robotics later on down the road. And it was just such a wide variety of opportunities and possibilities, and it really is great to see. So I hope you guys are excited, as I am, to see all the things that are happening. Anybody else want to share anything? Dr. Secor, please. Yeah, please. Right on cue.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Griffin. And we have some acknowledgements that we would like to share with the Board of Education and School community this evening. Tonight, we would like to recognize some of our outstanding robotics and DECA students. And I will ask Christine LaFries, our Director of Career and Technical Education, to come up and introduce them. And shortly after that, there will be a brief, awesome demonstration of our robot.
Always is impressive.
Thank you, Dr. Secor. I'm going to ask Mr. Hennings, Mrs. Massimo, and Mrs. Wood to come up here with me as well. They are the DECA advisors. We're going to recognize the DECA international competitors. Just to let you know what they had to do to get here, DECA is a co-curricula club at both high schools, and it's for students involved in our business program. And it's all done outside of their classroom day. They spend a lot of time preparing, working on their manuals, working on their presentations. We have great mentors from the community that come out and work with them. And this year, we were fortunate to have a selection of students that made it to our international competition in Atlanta, Georgia. Every year, it's somewhere else. We've been to California, we've been to Florida, we've been to Utah. And with a little challenging this year, they did virtual for regionals and states, but they still rose to the top. They were in the top three in the state in order to qualify to make it to nationals. So we're really, really proud of the hard work and dedication, and I thank the advisors also for their hard work and dedication that they put in. So I will call up your name, and you guys can come up. Michael Fallon for professional selling, hospitality, and tourism from High School East. Allison Tuil did professional selling from High School East. Juliana Nester, principals of hospitality and tourism from High School East. And we also had Antonio Sabatino, but he could not be with us tonight, from High School East. And now, from High School West, we have Sean Carroll. Abby Portella. And Katie McGee. They did a sales project manual, so they actually wrote a manual and did a presentation in front of judges, and they created and marketed and sold High School West apparel. So that was their project. Hitim Husani, principals of hospitality and tourism. Juliana Reuter, apparel and accessories marketing. Julia, sorry. And Matthew Braun, personal financial literacy from High School West. So congratulations to all the competitors. Thank you. Okay, next up, we're going to move on to robotics. We have a couple of recognitions before I turn it over to the team to do their demo. I'm going to ask Mr. Savage and Mr. Costello to come up so they can hand out their certificates. They are the robotics team advisors. So our first award goes to John Galetta. Come on up, John. And John was a Dean's List semifinalist was the award he won. In an effort to recognize the leadership and dedication of the most outstanding secondary school students from FIRST, the Kamen family sponsors awards for selected 10th or 11th grade students, known as the FIRST Dean's List Award. The students who earn FIRST Dean's List status as a semifinalist are great examples of current student leaders who have led their teams and communities to increase awareness for FIRST and its mission while achieving personal, technical expertise, and accomplishment. This is a very high honor for someone to receive. So we are very proud of John from High School West for receiving this, and he helped get the team be able to go to their international competition in, where were we, Houston, Texas. So congratulations, John. I'm going to ask you to stay, John. Because now, we're going to recognize the entire team, some members of the team, for receiving their Excellence in Engineering Award. So I'd like to call up Abigail Brennan, Akeeb Sayed, Christiana Falcaro, Luke Clark, and Vashita Codella. And the Excellence in Engineering Award celebrates the team that demonstrates a professional approach to the design process. A team must be able to describe the engineering process they went through and can trace elements of the designs from conception. The designs reflect an engineering solution to a specific problem and its functional practice. The designs are elegant and advantageous on the field of play. So congratulations to the team for receiving that award. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Savage and Mr. Costello, because we'll have a little demo of the robot.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Savage. I'm a technology teacher at High School East and co-advisor of the robotics team for about seven years now.
My name is Brian Costello. I'm a technology teacher at High School West for the last two years, and I'm the co-advisor of the robotics team. We have two other gentlemen here. This is Matthew Quigley. He's one of the assistant advisors, and Brian Sheridan, who's also an assistant advisor.
They're both also former presidents of the team and Smithtown graduates. And I'm going to pass it over to Matt Quigley, who's going to talk a little bit about how the team leads straight into college, career, and industry.
Good evening, everyone. So I graduated the team in '07, but before that, I spent four years on the robotics team here. And the skills that these students will learn, well, they'll take with them for the rest of their lives. Things like time management, cost management, the ability to work on complex problems that don't have finite solutions. You know, not every answer is in the back of a textbook. And things like working with people, you know, as the complexity increases, the stress increases, and people start arguing, and I actually love that, because it means that they really care about it, and they're going to focus hard and really try to do what's best for the team. And these skills are brought into college. You know, I graduated from my masters and bachelors in mechanical engineering from Stony Brook. And for five years, I would sit in classrooms, and you can tell the students that went from a FIRST program. They were the ones a little bit more focused, a little more able to handle the dearth of the knowledge that's being brought to you, and just a little bit more grounded. And that goes not only to college, also to industry. Freshman year of high school, I was so excited to be on a field trip. We went to a German automation company called Festo, and we learned about pneumatics, so air-powered cylinders. And nine years later, I'm at a job fair from college, and I saw Festo, just wanted to go say hi, and that led to my career. And I was with this company for 10 years. And you know, I'm in a small group of five people, and four of them came from this program. And frankly, the fifth person didn't come here because he was in industry way before this was even a program. But it really does help you succeed in life, and that's something that the students are probably definitely fortunate, but probably not really recognizing how fortunate they are. Very last thing I'd like to say is just thank you. Thank you to the board members, thank you to the community, thank you to the administrators, because the students really are lucky. I've seen programs not start because of the financial and time commitments that something like this takes. Us mentors spend hundreds of hours preparing and leading the students through what they need to do in a given year. And if you don't think it takes that long, just ask my wife, because she reminds me very often about that fact. And there are programs that don't start because of those responsibilities or those requirements. There are programs that fold right away because of how hard it is, and this really is a community event, and the students are very lucky to be here. And the very last thing is that this robot is prototyped, designed, built, tested, and competed with by the students. We advise them, you know, we teach them, we get on their nerves, and those are my three core responsibilities. So everything that they're about to show you comes from them directly. And that's all that I got. So thank you for your time.
Okay, so Christiana told me not to talk anymore, so I'm just going to hand it off to them, because it's a student-run team.
So as you know, we are the Smithtown Robotics Team, so we are comprised of both High School East and High School West. So as Mr. Quigley was saying, everything is built, programmed, competed with, all by students. So we meet almost every day. I'll talk about more later about how often we really do, because it is a lot. So yeah, I'll bring you guys into the presentation, so I'll start by introducing. I'm Christiana Falcaro. I am a senior. I'm the Vice President of Business.
I'm John Galetta. I'm a junior, and I'm the incoming president of the team.
I'm Abigail Brennan. I'm a freshman, and I'm the ambassador for the middle school FLL teams.
I'm Vashita Codella, and I'm a junior, and I'm the Public Relation Officer for next year.
Hi, my name is Luke Clark. I am a junior and also head of competitions for next year.
Everyone, my name is Akeeb Sayed, and I'm the Vice President of Engineering for this year.
So we want to start off by talking a bit about the program in which we operate, which is called FIRST. It stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. And they're a global organization operating in over 100 countries on the planet Earth, especially now they're having a big boom in Turkey and in Israel, and it's really phenomenal. We get to meet all these people and spread the love of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, not just in our local community, not even in our state and national community, but in a global community now. Now, FIRST stands, they're doing two primary things. One is providing a way for students to love and become inspired by and delve their way into STEM, providing them with career opportunities and paths into college that will be spoken about later. But it's also providing a sort of sport-like, I say in quotes, scenario, where there's a very competitive aspect. Many of us, we don't take part in the athletic sports, but this allows us to dive our passions into it, and it fulfills a very competitive role at the high school level. As you'll see, there's over 80 million scholarships that's provided through FIRST, and it opens up tons of doors into the future, not only in STEM, but in other fields that will be impacted by the various skills that you'll see we learn on this team. And I'm going to hand it off to Abigail Brennan now, just going to talk about engineering skills.
So on this team, we go through our first steps of the design process, where we learn how to prototype and draft, and then we go into the actual building of the robot, where we learn how to program, we learn electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, and just problem-solving in general, because we do experience some bumps along the way.
Well, then, let's get on to the business department of our team. So the business department handles all these sponsorships and outreach programs where students can develop their financial management skills, their organization skills, their professional communication skills with corporate sponsors from companies such as Festo, Alties, Microsoft, and local companies, too. So we do outreach programs such as the Smithtown Elementary Presentations that we did, and the Smithtown Fair that Mr. Griffin, that Mr. Griffin talked about earlier. And yeah, and then we do like, so we do like different outreach programs, and then we do go into like developing our photography skills and videography skills and like social media. And yeah, that's like one of our big skills that we learn on our business department, on our team. So I'll bring this to Luke Clark.
Now, all these actions and stuff that we do throughout the season is not just to build a robot, but it is also to make life skills, leadership, communication, something that can be expressed via business, communication, getting sponsorships and all that, where we're talking to real companies, getting money, or teamwork, leadership, all these which are usually found in sports, but are just as easily found here in our robotics team. There's also adaptivity and being able to work under pressure, which is very important in a modern world, I would have to assume. And each of these work towards making a better person. I'll put it on to my great friend here, Akeeb Sayed.
Thank you, Luke. You've heard about all the skills robotics requires from the last three people that came before me. You've heard about the engineering skills that it requires. It requires mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, programming. You name the skill, we have the skill. We have business with sponsorships, we have communication, we have to fund the robot. This robot costs about like $5,000, so we have to contact these companies. And these skills that we learn all through our high school, these don't just stay in high school, these carry over to college. We have sent, as a team, we've sent people to Harvard, to MIT, to Cornell, and if I get to brag about myself a little bit, I'm going to the University of Maryland for a full ride. And my friend here, Christiana, she's going to SUNY Oswego for Technology Education, so you can really begin to see just the impact that this community has on the seniors and on all people on the team. And I think, I'm just not speaking for myself, when I say that this team has really helped me gain the skills necessary to have a successful future in technology and also in business. And with that, I'll pass it off to Christiana.
So I would like to talk about when we meet during the year. So we start really early. We start in September. From September to January, we meet every Thursday about until 7:30 at night. And January, we have this thing called kickoff. So that's when they give us the game, all of the rules, all the constraints. We get a very long manual, about 300 pages, that you have to sit there and read. And then, from that point, from January to March until the end of competitions, we're meeting every single day after school. So every single day after school with homework after, of course. But it is a lot of work, but it's so much fun put in, and we have team dinners every night in build season, so everybody is really connected on our team. So I would really like to thank the board for having us. Thank you. And now, we're going to give you a little demonstration of what our robot does.
So once we enable here, we can talk about the sort of engineering process and the robot itself. Are we, it's not blinking. All right, so yeah. This is a robot, generally. All right, so it's enabled now. There's a little light there, that's a robot safety light, and it's got to demonstrate that the robot is enabled, and that means that it can hurt you if you don't behave around it. So the first part that, in the process of this building the robot, we have to identify a task, a use case, so to speak, and that task is provided by FIRST. And that is, in this case, we have to shoot a ball by intaking it from the ground and then launching it out into a big conical hoop. So I'll demonstrate now, the intake is going to come down right now, and now it's going to come back up. And it does that through a pneumatic system that's just right here, and Akeeb actually designed this with the other programmers. It comes down, it's able to, you can take this out, or you can roll it in, it intakes the ball. Using these mechanism wheels, it are able to funnel it in, which was a last-minute engineering decision. So go for it. Look at how that works. That's really phenomenal. So yeah. Then moving on to the second primary component of our robot is the feeding system, which went through quite a few iterations. Initially, we went for a thin cord, but now we had to adjust to a belt, because it was a lot less slippage was occurring on the pulleys, and it gave us more surface area. So as you can see, I don't know if you can see, but there's these orange belts right here, all internally, and they're responsible for transporting the ball up over here. Now, it's moving in back and forth, very sick. Now, we're going to try and launch one of these balls in a safe manner. As a matter of fact, it's not going to hurt anybody or any equipment, and it's going to be quite astonishing that that's the case. So these wheels here, we had to calculate, we, a kid named Leo spent about a week figuring out the ideal distance between these two wheels. Very good engineering, good prototyping went into that, and he learned quite a bit. And then we had to calculate the angle, and then after all that, we were able to put it in CAD and then duplicate it in real life. So we're going to demonstrate that it does that. Good job, Luke. What a guy. Miss LaFries as well. Phenomenal. Thank you. Wow, that's, and I said we weren't athletic. That's forward. That's forward. Forward is back on the robot. It's not, it doesn't make any sense. Look at that. And they said we weren't athletic. So that's quite nice. Now, this is the part that I talk about a lot, but I will not talk about it a lot now, because Akeeb said so. And it's this climber here, so we're going to actuate the climber to demonstrate what it's supposed to do. The robot doesn't pull up on a bar. It's rather fascinating. And now, imagine there's a bar like right here, and you can like picture it, and then it's going to, it comes, you pull it down, and then, and these hooks actuate, and it locks on, so it's going to stall the motor. Very long 2D design process went into that, as well as a three-dimensional design process on the computer, and then it eventually failed, and we had to do it all over again. And that's what I talk about usually. But that's engineering, and that's how you learn on the team. We learn about failure and success, and that is, at the end of the day, the idea of this presentation, that we're not strictly speaking, well, we are robotics team strictly speaking, but it's not only a robotics team. As Dean Kamen, who's the founder of FIRST, says, "It's more than robots. We're using, we're not using kids to build robots, they're using robots to build kids." And that takes, manifests in the engineering skills, but also in the business skills and the soft skills that we spoke about in our presentation. We'd collectively like to thank the board and all of the audience. Oh, wait, we have one more thing. Oh, no, you do? All right. Get ready. This is not my idea. And now, we'd like to thank the board extra for letting us hopefully come back next year. So hopefully, there's no shooters next year in the game. Anyway, thank you. We're Team A10.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, and thank you to the board for allowing them and Dr. Secor to come tonight. They're an amazing group of students to work with. They put a lot of time in, and I'm very grateful to be able to work with them, so thank you.
I have to say, it's incredible to see the teamwork, passion, and camaraderie that you all display, and just the fact that that was built from scratch is pretty impressive. So I know a lot of you guys are thanking the board. We're just here representing the community. The community is the one that provides these opportunities, and like we said last time, those opportunities create futures, and it's great to see, and we wish you guys all the best in everything you do. Like I said, a lot of great stuff going on in the district. So we have our, back to our agenda, to move to receive the Claims Auditor's Report, kind of a motion to approve the Claims Auditor's Report.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, like to see if we can get a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10th and May 24th regular meetings, the May public hearing, and the May 17th annual meeting. Kind of a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And finally, a motion to accept correspondence items 1 through 12. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Severetti, do you have something you wanted to share?
I went to, I had the honor of being asked by my daughter to be a chaperone at the Relay for Life, which I knew nothing about. I gave her permission to do it like a parent would, made my donation. I had the honor of being there from 4:30 in the afternoon to 5 o'clock in the morning so I could chaperone the team. What those kids did, we talk about team, the athletes, we talk about clubs. These kids raised over $70,000 for cancer research. Now, for me, it was, it felt to me, because I'm a cancer survivor, and I had, a lot of those girls who were there, who are my daughter's friends, were on my softball team. I never told them I had cancer. I told them, a friend of mine who I coached with told me, make it, that you lost a bet and you had to shave your head, because it was their last year, and I wanted them to enjoy it. I didn't want them to worry about me, and they were fantastic players, they won the champion, but seeing them watching me walk around as a survivor, they finally realized what I had. Just what those kids did to me, I took it like personal, because $70,000, if anybody's listening to me, next year, if we could all, maybe everybody go out there and support them, because they were selling things on the field, they were raising money up and sending apps out to everybody, let's try to break that record, because that is something. $70,000 for high school kids to raise for cancer research, they deserve a round of applause. That was very great.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
I think that's awesome that they were able to do that. I also think we need to, especially with fundraising opportunities, and find a mechanism for kids that are coming from families that can't necessarily find that money, and having a way that they can quietly reach out, so maybe they can't do the financial donation, you know, but kids that want to be a part of it, don't have the means to be a part of it, can still be a part of it without any blemish, because they didn't have the money. I think it's awesome, and I just know that for some kids, I think the sentiment of what we do is amazing. I think the money that our kids raise is amazing, and I'm envious that you had an opportunity to do that with your child and your friends and stuff like that, but going forward to continue to build on that success, also finding a mechanism for kids that just don't have the means to participate. And that's not on you, John, or taking anything away. Just want to have as many kids that want to be there, find a way to be there, and that's something that, Dr. Secor, if we can talk with our high school administration about finding a confidential conduit for kids to reach out and say, "I want to be there, I just don't have those funds."
Yeah, but it wasn't individual fundraising. They did it as a group. My daughter had a group of, I believe, seven kids, boys and girls, other groups had more. They did it as a group, as a team, and then they just pulled it all together.
Right.
And that $70,000 was everyone together. And that $70,000 was everyone together as a school dish. I believe it was just Smithtown West. Again, I apologize, I'm not 100% sure. But they did it together. It wasn't an individual. Each team did it. So I had to get some... I mean, I know, just let you know that I don't think incoming thing, but I agree, everybody should have the right to participate in that.
Right. I just, I know that we have, that there's been a minimum to get in, or kids aren't going to share that their family don't have them, doesn't have the means to do it. But, you know, just to see as many kids as we can get out there to be there and walk and celebrate, you know, this momentous, you know, celebration of people getting healthy, I'm sure is amazing.
I think you both raised wonderful points. You know, fundraising is incredibly important, but so is awareness and engagement. And we want to make sure all of our students have that opportunity. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Any other unfinished business items?
Yes, Matt, I do. So I have a motion to make, and I would just like to preface it. The last meeting we had, I made a motion which was tabled. There were a lot of questions about it. So I made another motion that's a little bit more specific. I agreed to table my motion under the condition that we were going to have a meeting for the Instructional Committee to move forward. And it's been three weeks that meeting hasn't happened. So with that said, because I would really like to get the ball rolling on our enrichment program, I'd like to make a motion to the Superintendent of Schools that he provide the board with the cost to reinstate our elementary enrichment program as it was at the time of its cancellation in today's dollars by June 28th, 2022's board meeting.
Do we have a motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So I know that we had quite a lengthy discussion about this last time. And I know that as far as enrichment programs go, there's so many possibilities of what the district would be able to provide. And I believe that's why it was decided to table that motion to have the discussion in Instructional Review Committee. Were you able to conduct the Instructional Review Committee?
No, we weren't. And that's, and again, the reason I agreed to table the motion was because we were going to have a meeting to talk about more specifics about it. That didn't happen, so that's why I made my motion very specific to the program that was in existence. And again, it's just a jumping off point to get the ball rolling. As you all know, I feel very, very strongly about an enrichment program in the district.
What, at about what time did that previous enrichment program stop? Off the top of my head, I forget.
I believe it was 2012. The cost at the time was about $70,000.
It just, it makes me think that 10 years has passed since that program has ceased. I think that there's probably, you know, obviously different people in different leadership roles, whether it be definitely superintendent, cabinet, directors. I think that discussion should be had where you have our academic leaders talk about possibilities of probably a much better program than what was there 10 years ago and providing different opportunities for our kids. I think that it's vital to have those discussions before sending Mr. Tobin and his staff to start putting numbers together for something that might not even be worthwhile because there's other things that are better.
Absolutely. A discussion has to be made, has to be had. And again, I was told we could start a discussion, and it's been three weeks, and we don't even have a date set.
Is there a reason why there's been those dates?
So the discussion was, if we're looking at the Instructional Committee, that'd be myself, Karen, Kevin, and the three of us would be on there, whoever else. We were looking to get, when the last conversation that we had here at the board meeting, looking to get teacher input, building administration input, so we can bring people together as this is, you know, an idea that's coming from the board, and looking to get input from the administration and buildings, teachers, to see what type of program in 2022, '23 would be more applicable to something that we were doing, you know, over a decade ago. I also believe, and again, I don't have the figures in front of me, but if there were just two teachers running the enrichment program, and I think in its final stages that was there, it was certainly a lot more than $70,000. Just, you know, salary and benefits alone, you know, would probably be triple that cost. I'm all for a really good in-depth conversation. I know that's going to be our topic of priority for the instructional meeting come September. But the reason why we didn't have a meeting is just finding a mutual date where everybody was available. You know, and I had shared, I don't know about anybody else. I work in a school. I'm not home any night from last week through the remainder of this week. And then, you know, except for Monday for the holiday, I was not available to come. I was available on the 23rd, that was moving up. I was available the final week of June, any day. Our administrators are still here, our teachers are not here. But it's important to bring everybody to the table. And this isn't pushing it off. It's, you know, we could do it two ways. We could do it fast, or we could do it right. And I think having what we're looking for for '22, '23, and beyond, I think that's worthy of a discussion with all the different representation to be a part of it.
And I think that conversation absolutely has to happen before we send our administrators off doing something that would wind up being completely meaningless. That conversation needs to happen. And when it does, and it's not going to take one meeting, I'm sure, it's going to be over months and months of time. Those costs need to be set at that time. I think that just taking our, or requiring our administrators to go ahead and do work that will have no meaning in 2022 is a complete waste of time and money that should be spent in more meaningful areas right now.
Mike, I do, I agree with what you're saying. It could be done fast, it could be done right. But it has to start.
Right.
If it doesn't start, it can't be done fast, right, slow, wrong.
Well, I think we talked about at, not the previous meeting, but the meeting before that, that this would be a focal point, that we would not be looking to implement the program for the '22, '23 school year, but it would be the following year, giving us the next school year, to collect the data, to get the input from administration, to get teacher input, to see what really is the best bang for our buck and what we're looking to do, and come up with the consensus. Now, I know that we start the budget process, you know, January is really when we start getting work. They start gathering information in December. But I think having four months, five months of putting that together, and we can set up multiple meetings to get that input, and then ask driving questions. You know, what is our specific target audience? Are we looking at primary? Are we looking at intermediate? Are we looking at an after-schools program? Are we looking for an in-school program? How are we getting equity among seven buildings that have a variety of sizes? So these are all conversations that you and I don't have the answers to, but we need the input from teachers and building administration how to make a quality program and equitable amongst the seven elementary schools. And that's going to take a lot of work. But I think that conversation could start in September because we weren't able to put it together. Not that anybody's running from it. It's just, it wasn't enough time to get there. And like I said, I think, in my personal opinion, having all the stakeholders there, I think we could put some really meaningful time set aside, set up a string of meetings, you know, with those jumping points, and then we can go from there. I think the data of the cost and the program from 10 years ago is not going to be applicable to what we're looking to do for our kids today. Our abilities have gone up exponentially of what our kids are able to do. You know, I remember back in the day, they were building bridges with popsicle sticks and toothpicks. And I think now our kids are working on coding and really that 21st generation type science standards that I think would be, you know, really the way we should be looking at going forward.
From what I understand, the program that was here 10 years ago, it was teachers just teaching before school. It wasn't a full-blown class where the teacher would have, it'd be a separate position. Is that correct?
That's not, that's not correct.
Well, can we find out what the program was before? Because I don't know what it was 10 years ago.
I do. I, maybe not 10 years ago, but I could speak from it. From a teacher perspective, it was for, it was in the intermediate grades.
Wait, this is Smithtown you're talking about?
In Smithtown.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
It was elementary?
It was elementary. It was at a composite elementary school. And it was both a before-school program, and it was during a day where they were pulled out as well. The teachers were specifically assigned to the enrichment program, and they worked in multiple buildings. So, you know, anybody remembers like Mrs. Carol Moloff back in the day, or Mary Hans, Glenn Rogers, who does the AIS in math and project lead the way. He was an enrichment teacher. So it was, it was both. And it went on a rotational schedule.
You seem to be pretty well-versed with what was going on years ago.
I mean, yeah, there were some really positives to it. I know the district went through some financial times. I was no longer working in the district. I'd been gone for quite some time. But I do believe opportunities for enrichment is important. I just think we need to do it a little bit differently and gather that information.
Well, I think that maybe you and Karen and Dr. Simmons can start that conversation even without anybody else, just to understand what happened before so that when you get everybody in the room, and principals are, you know, working over the summer, maybe they could be involved at some, you know, point, and we can get a meeting on the calendar before September. Because we have been talking about this all calendar year. So it just keeps getting pushed and...
I did offer to meet with Karen and Kevin and the administration.
That's great. So can we do that also? But it seems like, you know, I don't want to wait till we have all the players in a room to have the first meeting when you guys can sit and talk at least and explain what you remember it to be, what your vision could be, just throwing out ideas. And then sharing it with all those people, obviously.
And again, we did do that at the last instructional meeting. I did share with my overview and my experience and different things. You know, we were looking at different things. Karen had some ideas, I had some different ideas. But we did start those conversations.
Well, then, I think moving forward, it might be helpful to have instructional, or maybe all board committee meetings on the calendar, monthly. They're just on there so that there's no, people can't get together and set in advance like these are. And then if you don't need them, then you don't have to have it.
I think different committees require a different amount of time. I think there are certain committees that meet once a year. Some, depending on what's on the agenda, might need to meet more than that. I think that everybody that's working towards that is working in good faith. I think that nobody is trying to brush this issue aside. I think it's one of those issues where...
People's schedules conflict.
Sometimes things aren't doable.
So that we get it on the calendar, they can't conflict. It just seems to be more efficient.
How about, how about we let the committee come to a decision when they can meet so that they can do the work, and then they can report back at the next public meeting?
So is there a date that you guys can meet already?
Mr. Sadens, maybe you could, we can set up a date with you three, that, a date where you'll set up a date to meet. So in other words, say, a week from today, you guys will have a date set up where you can sit down and meet?
I'm around almost all summer. I'm not over, I can't meet the first week of July, but I am around the entire summer. And I could sit with Karen and with Kevin, and we could set dates, four meetings for the fall.
Right. Now, Mike, I believe we did set a tentative date on the 23rd. I just know it was graduation day for an hour. And I think I had just asked, I know you had wanted the principals there. And my last question was, you know, were any of the principals available? But if it's just the three of us to get the ball rolling, that's fine. But for now, I think my motion, my motion's a very basic, simple question. So I'm hoping we can just take a vote on this motion. And, you know, I'm going to assume if anybody truly is interested in getting the enrichment program started, then we'll vote to get it started.
So let's, we'll take a vote on the motion. Just to be clear, it's the enrichment program that was run a decade ago.
Just to get a cost analysis.
In today's numbers.
Yes, because a decade ago, the numbers are very different than now.
I'm just trying to be clear, Mrs. Murphy. That's all. Just trying to be clear.
Very clear.
Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Marchello?
I'm just dumbfounded, and I understand. We just finished saying we're going to try and meet and look at what the valuable program is going to be and look like. And I'm not sure if, just looking at what we did, how much it was 10, 12 years ago was going to help us.
Totally understandable. We're just, this is the motion that was brought forward.
Jerry, I'm just trying to get it started. That's all.
Mr. Marchello, this was the motion that was brought to the table. It was tabled last time. Not much movement since then. So just to be clear, we have...
And that's exactly the point, Matt. There's been nothing since then. I was told if I tabled the motion, we could have a meeting. Three weeks of come and gone, we've had no meeting. Instructional, do you know we've had twice this year?
I believe everybody, like I said, is working in good faith. I do know at this time of year, there are quite a few items on the district calendar that people are pulled in different directions.
The community doesn't need to hear these conversations. We need to vote. We have a vote on the table. Take a vote, move on. Wasting time.
So we have, Mr. Marchello?
No, we're good.
What's your vote?
Oh, uh, no.
Motion fails to pass, 3 to 4.
It's a shame that we just don't, we don't want to get enrichment back in this school. It's a shame.
It's absolutely not true. We all want enrichment. We want it to be valuable. So don't make comments that we don't want that because that's not true. I would never say something to put into your mouth. Please don't say things about my opinion if it's not accurate.
So Jerry, when are we going to get started?
You just said you have a meeting on the books for June 23rd.
3 o'clock.
You just said it. I had no idea, but you just said so.
And I would like some data to bring to the meeting.
To start it.
And the thing is, I want to, I value the time of our administrators, right?
And so do I, Mike.
I don't want, I don't want them to waste their time doing something that is irrelevant. Have the conversation, see what can be done. And when you have an idea as to what you want to accomplish, at that point, let's get a price to it.
So Mike, you're saying my idea is irrelevant? That's a little bit insulting, Mike.
All right, folks, folks, we've had the motion. We voted on it. Time to move on.
Oh, can I just say, I'm so sorry. Sorry. Just one thing. Last week, Mike Sadens, you had said that teachers need a specific certification. Neil, do you happen to know what that is, or can you?
I believe you said possibly. There's a certification for the teacher of the gifted, talented program.
If it's a gifted and talented program. If we're just doing some sort of enrichment where they're not, where they're not, they're still getting this, you know, it's not anything in place of their education. It's enriching it. Then it's different.
It would be, but then enrichment, it would be enrichment for all?
No, no, I'm just asking if a teacher needs a special certification if we had an enrichment program, not a gifted and talented.
In terms of the teacher, if we're looking at it, and I'm sure Neil can speak to it, probably a little bit more eloquently than I can, but if we're doing our beds code, which we're required to do every year in every school district, and we have to put down what the certification is for a teacher speaking, teaching a specific program. If we have a teacher teaching an enrichment or a gifted program, whatever name we give to it, that's teaching out of certification, that's not something that the district is prone to do unless it's an emergency situation.
Well, what if it is not, what if, I guess, this is why I feel like the conversation needs to happen, because in my head, when I'm thinking of enrichment in elementary, I'm thinking of just how we had elementary this year, but in addition to that, there is enrichment before school, after school, at some point like that. So would that teacher need a certification, is what I'm asking you?
I, I think these are great conversations, but I think we're at the wrong venue. I think these are the conversations that should take place in instructional review committee.
But that, and...
And, Mr. Sadens, would you be able to put certification as an agenda item?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that Neil could share with Kevin to bring to the meeting on the 23rd.
Thank you. I think that's the whole purpose of having these committee meetings, to really get in depth with, and that's why we have these committee meetings.
Two, two, Matt.
That's good. All right, awesome. Moving on, any other unfinished business items?
You had AC.
Yes, I believe one of the board members had brought up the possibility of central air, and I know that, for me personally, I know that as the climate continues to change, some people may believe that or not, but I think that we have to head in that direction. And in time, in time, we're going to have to get to that point where buildings have, you know, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. I think that making incremental steps to get there would be prudent. I also think that people that had questions about that can go back to watch the budget or the bond presentation where we did ask our architect about that, and then during the, I believe it was the second budget workshop, I believe we brought it up again with Mr. Tobin, who gave some answers. So without being repetitive, I know that that information has been put out there several times, and is still available through video on our district website from the bond workshops and also the district meetings as well.
I think, how are we going to get there, though? Like, okay, we're saying we need to get there.
I'm not an expert in...
No, I know, neither am I, obviously.
So that's where you have professionals that lead the way.
So can we bring those professionals in? Because all we, so far from what, again, just the way I've heard it, is why we can't do it.
Well, right now, if you remember, it was when we did ask Mr. Caston, the architect, the ballpark number off the top of his head was about $50 million.
Yeah, it's not going to go down, right?
The ballpark was about $50 million, and some of the things that they are doing is when they're doing work, if you remember, they're retrofitting some of the buildings so that work would not be repetitive, with the intent of moving towards central air in the future. So it's on radar. We've talked about it several times, and it's something we're going to have to move forward with, but, you know, at a $50 million price tag, it's not something we're going to dive into headfirst right away.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Please.
So, yeah, there is two presentations that are, that are available still on the website. The September 21st Open Bond Forum that we had here at New York Avenue, that is on when the architect specifically talks about the AC options, some of the pros and cons, and the estimated costs. That is under the bond, under the Board of Ed, and then you go Bond Vote 2021. Under the open forums, you'll see a video. Additionally, we also talked about at the November 9th meeting, of a board meeting at November 9th, that presentation is also still available up on the website under Board of Education tab under 2122 Presentations and Reports. So these things were talked about. Some of the numbers, we did talk about, two different options. One, we're placing individual AC units throughout the district as, in lieu of, of central air. That is less expensive in the range of $7 to $10 million, but it creates some other issues. Specifically, it's not tied into the ventilation system, so it doesn't meet code. It would not be fully adable by SED because of those reasons. It also can create condensation issues potentially, because there's no dehumidification system as part of those AC units. The other option was the full HVAC engineered system, which is similar to, to central air. That cost, he's revised because of some of the work you've talked about, Mr. Gribbin, that we're putting in some of the electrical capacity with the bond, but he still said it would be upwards of $20 to $25 million. Again, no issues with code. It would meet the code. It'd be tied into ventilation, and no condensation issues because there's the dehumidification built into the system. Lastly, for any of this, we need a source of funding, right? The source of funding is something that needs to be voter approved. We just established the capital reserve, as we know. This May, the voters approved that. That is, AC was one of the many, many items that were included in that laundry list of potential projects. If AC was something that we wanted to do, of course, we'd have to build up to $25 million or so. That could, the only way we're getting that money is through surplus funds in the, in the budget. That could take time, and we'd have to get there. And all those other projects would have to be forfeited. The other way would be to put up another proposition where we'd issue more debt to do that. The voters would have to approve both that and the debt to do so. It would be a separate proposition like we had for the actual bond vote, for a specific bond for air conditioning. So those are your two basic options. The long term would be through the capital reserve, get the money in there, and pick it off that way, or go for another borrowing, have the voters approve that, to have a separate proposition at a future vote.
So it's $25 million?
$25 million, his, again, he's being very rough, and I want to put him on the spot.
You say 26, I'm not going to, I'm just saying, verse 50, that's half. That's a huge difference.
50, what he was saying originally was, with all the electrical capacity additions that we're already building upon in the bond, he's since revised that in those presentations, saying, since we're doing some of that work already, because a lot of it's the electrical capacity. We just can't throw in units in every window. We don't have the electrical capacity. So we're trying to build up our electrical capacity to have that potential, and that's already in a large part of the bond. But again, still, that would be how, the two ways we could do it.
Do you think that the money that we're saving from solar, I don't even know if I said that right, but you know what I mean, right?
I know what you mean, but that is just, that's taking down our electric bill every month.
So there's not, right, but I'm saying, right, I understand that's decreasing our electric bill every month, but we, the money that was earmarked for our electric bill is now not earmarked as much because we have a lower electric bill. So can that money get, where is that money going that can build up over time? I'm sorry, am I...
Sorry, it just gives a credit.
I'm sorry, my question's stupid or something? I know you're laughing at me, so I'm a little confused.
We essentially just...
I believe that money's passed along to the taxpayer by keeping the, the budget low as much as we can. So it's actually tax savings that we're using, that $1 million a year from the solar, and I think Mr. Letty is, I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Letty is exploring other options and possibilities where we can add throughout the district, with the intention of further electrical needs in the future. Mr. Tobin, I'm impressed that you remembered the dates of those presentations off the top of your head, but I'm not surprised at all.
Mr. Tobin, thank you very much. We've been getting a lot of emails from community members asking about the AC, particularly when we had a heat wave a few weeks ago, and that was all I really wanted to get out to the community, just a, you know, basic explanation as to, you know, why there's not AC, and what it would take to move forward with it. And also, those presentations, I think, will be very, very helpful for people to, to go look up themselves. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Any other unfinished business items? Without any other items, continuing to move down the agenda, we have, I believe we have a policy committee report. Glad to see the policy committee was meeting.
Yeah, so we had a couple policies, or two to be exact, that are on for, for read tonight. The first one's going to be Policy 5151, homeless children, that needed to be updated. That goes along with the McKinney-Vento Act educational law, and we needed to update the policy to be in compliance. The second policy that is going to be read tonight is Policy Number 9230, and that's going to be a first read for Resend, and the new revised 9240 will include the posting vacancies. We did speak to this a few meetings ago, and came back at some suggestions during, that had some conversation here at the board meeting. We, there was some language that wanted to have all positions posted, and we put that language in, but we did add the term "if practical." A perfect example would be, there are going to be times when we are going to have an emergency leave. Let's say, God forbid, a elementary principal needed to take an emergency extended leave, you know, to go through the, and every building is mandated to have a building principal sign to them. So instead of going through a lengthy process to having to post and wait and have that position unmanned for quite some time, there would be a discretion in a situation like for the superintendent, to put somebody that's been board approved, or somebody in that position. But otherwise, all the positions will be posted, and it works within the, the language and the constraints of the CBAs for both teachers and the administrative contract.
Do you put it on a temporary basis, or is it a...
It would be, it would, would not be for long term. It would be to put somebody in there. If it was going to be for extended time, I'm sure Dr. Seacor and Mr. Katz would come back to speak to the board about the situation with the plan. So it'd be temporary to cover, and then if some, for a position that needed to be filled in an emergency situation, otherwise, it's going to go through the, you know, the practice.
Mike?
Yeah.
You know, it's interesting that you use that one phrase, "if practicable," because I had in my notes, that was the one thing I had an issue with. It's such a loophole word, is could it be changed to "for emergency purposes only," or something that, you know, if, it wasn't practicable because I had to leave early that day, or, you know, it's a loophole word.
It, it is a loophole word, I guess. I would, I would trust a superintendent, you know, and, and the cabinet, that they're not looking to do a loophole or work through a back door, that it would be a genuine situation. Unfortunately, we've had situations where people had to go on emergency leaves that are not expected, you know, and those positions need to be filled. We do have people that have worked in the district, or have, you know, are known commodities that have come back and filled in for leaves here, and, you know, the 20 something years that I've been, you know, a part of here as either an employee or as a community member. So there was some other language that, that was changed in there, but we did leave that for that. If you'd like to hold off on the first read, we can.
I, I would like to. It's, it's just so subjective, and, you know, this policy is...
Do you have a suggestion for better work?
Well, I would leave it out altogether if possible.
I was just curious, because I know...
Or say, in emergency situations only. I mean, this policy is to protect our employees.
If I'm not mistaken, do we not have to vote to put someone in temporarily as a board?
We do.
Even in the emergency situation? So it's not like it's carte blanche. We, as a board, have to approve...
Correct.
Whatever administrator to temporarily be in there. So we have that oversight, I guess.
It wasn't about, yeah, it wasn't about us voting for them. It was about having the opportunity for everyone to, who is interested in that kind of position, to have that. So maybe if we do put something where it says "in emergencies for required positions only", I mean, like you said, if, if you're mandated to have a certain administrator, you know, in a position every day, like if a principal's not there, obviously someone goes to cover, right? Even just on a general day. So if, God forbid, like you said, there was an emergency, you can't leave a building without a principal while we have a posting, have a closing date, which is understood, so...
Well, I think that, I think that speaks to administrative positions, but we have teachers that go out all the time. We have subs that then get assigned from a per diem sub to a leave of absence, a long-term sub. Again, that doesn't go through, like, we still approve it on the agenda. It's put in when they're getting a change of their position. So we do do that. You know, again, I think we left that in there for that specific emergency type of situation, but I think we cleaned it up to make any new positions.
If I could just make a suggestion. So, you know, again, this, this probably should happen in a, a policy meeting at this point. Why don't we table, why don't we table this? For this, table it for now? Put it on for first reading next time?
No, no, we table the first reading. Mrs. O'Connor, we're going to table the first reading for 9240, right?
Table the first reading?
And then, I think, that's all right.
Well, it gives us...
Find a better word.
What is that, Ken? I, I wouldn't think so, because then we'd have to put that on for a first reading, wouldn't we?
Oh, right, okay.
Right? So I, I think it makes sense to table the first reading today, and then we'll have another policy meeting?
Yeah.
And put it on for the next meeting.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
So we can expect for the next first reading that that phrase would be something different, or it could come back and say, "Sorry, we're doing it anyway"?
No, we... They'll have the discussion and policy meeting, and then they'll bring a recommendation.
Stacy, we could have said that tonight, we didn't, right?
Right, I know.
So I'm not going back to say that, we're going to go back to meeting and say, "Too bad, you know, that's what we're doing." Otherwise, we would have just voted on tonight, which we didn't do.
I'm just trying to move it along, because this phrase was the problem last time, and the phrase is still there.
That wasn't just this phrase. There was multiple things that we made changes to. It wasn't one thing. That would have been simplistic, and that's not it. We also needed, as we discussed at the policy meeting, that we do need to allow flexibility for the superintendent to fulfill positions, you know, when emergency situations arrive, and do his or her job.
It's understandable.
You know, and as Jerry said, we come back to the board, and it gets voted on, and whether we approve it or not approve it, there's still that, you know, checks and balance system, you know, where we have to be on board with that.
And just so you're aware, when we have a policy meeting, we're also with council. And in that meeting, we can speak to council further, and, and get some advice from him, and see if, what changes would be necessary, if any. And if they are, we'll make those changes and put on for the first reading next time.
And council was a part of that meeting. We did speak a bit at length about it to ensure that we had the flexibility to keep our buildings staffed and appropriately run.
Sounds good.
If, if I may, I just want to make sure that, are we continuing with 5151 homelessness?
Yeah, I believe it's just 9240.
Okay.
Table, table 9240. Hold off on that.
Mike?
And 9230.
Can I just ask a question about 5151?
Excuse us, 9230. And another que, a question about 5151?
Couple, like, errors, if I, would you want me to just send them to you to, to fix?
Yeah, that would be great.
And then I, it was a very comprehensive policy on homeless children, and I'm just wondering, I think you said something about compliance. Is that the only reason? There was a...
Well, it needs to be, it needed to be updated. We had to follow the statutes that are there, and working with Mr. Goodstack, Goodstat, our attorney, made the recommendations along with Mr. Simmons to make sure that we're in compliance with what, you know, the mandate is.
No, I was just wondering if the state came down with new rules about it, and that's why you had to bring it up to...
Mr. Goodstat, do you want to speak to that?
So when it comes to your education of homeless children and unaccompanied youth, the main thing is for there to be a removal of all barriers. And the policy, as previously drafted, doesn't set forth all the rights and obligations that homeless students may have. This policy is very law-driven. It's very specific with regards to McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistant Act, as well as Education Law 3209. Nothing in here is actually something that's subjective to the school district. It's all law. The whole purpose for this is to ensure that all homeless students or all unaccompanied youth has a removal of all barriers in order to get anything that they're afforded to under the law. So that's, that was the need for the change.
Okay, thank you.
Are there so many changes in here that we don't like know what was added or not? The other one we got is written in tight and red, but it's easy to see. This one is, it sounds like a lot more.
If, if I may, if I may, so basically, you had a, you had a policy that was, it was, it was in board docs. It was two pages. We've basically scrapped the entire policy and started fresh.
Okay.
Because this policy says pretty much nothing. So your new policy is, it's much more straightforward. It sets forth everything in the law that homeless students and unaccompanied youth are entitled to, and it's something that the district already practices. It's just now I'm writing.
Thank you, Mr. Goodstat. Thank you for the time and energy you guys put into the policy committee to make sure that we're updated and have accurate policies that reflect our practice. Now it's time for Dr. Seacor's superintendent report. Dr. Seacor?
Thank you, Mr. Gribbin. First, I'd like to speak to a pressing concern that we all have related to school security. Understandably, the tragic school shooting in Uvalde has prompted a national conversation about school safety. Thankfully, the district has made school security a priority for some time now. Our efforts in protecting those we teach and supervise are ongoing and remain a constant priority, not because of a reaction to an incident, but rather as a proactive approach to strengthening our safety protocols in all of our schools. That said, we will always look for ways to improve in this area. In addition to the information that was shared in our recent letters regarding security, I would like to highlight the following. Over the last several years, the district has made several additional investments in various security initiatives, including the following. The district hired Culver Investigations as its security consultant in 2018. We installed security vestibules and visitor management system, otherwise known as Raptor, at all schools and in the central office. We installed exterior security booths at the secondary schools. We increased and enhanced security camera coverage district-wide. We installed a swipe access control system and other lockdown and lockout features district-wide. Over the last several years, we purchased additional security vehicles. And on this evening's agenda, we are asking for the Board of Education to authorize the purchase of two additional vehicles to allow us to post a security vehicle every day at every elementary school, in addition to the existing full-time security staff coverage at these buildings. The two new vehicles will be electric, and will have the ability to be charged at the existing charging station at High School West. As I stated, stated earlier, this has been a district priority for some time. Also, the bond that was approved last fall, I mentioned earlier this evening, will help provide us with additional resources to bolster our existing safety and security measures. The budget was developed to include updated video surveillance and the installation of additional cameras. We will also be installing new interior doors and locks, which is referred to as door hardening. The new security locks will operate in a manner that will lock classrooms securely without having to open the classroom door in order to set the door in a locked position. Let me conclude by stating that we fully understand there are no guarantees that we can prevent every possible scenario, but that does not preclude us from doing all we can to ensure the safety of our students and staff. I also have to remind everyone that we cannot share all of the safety precautions because we would not want to give this information to a potential bad actor. I can assure you that this work will remain a priority for the district. Thank you. And now, we have two presentations this evening, that we are excited to share with the Board of Education and school community. First, we have Mr. Dan Helms, the district's Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, and Dr. Kevin Simmons, the district, District Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Administration. And they will provide us with an update on the district's work associated with its strategic plan. Mr. Helms?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Seacor. We wanted to speak to the community this evening and our progress with the district's strategic plan. We're very proud of the time, effort, and level of community responsiveness we have received in creating this plan. We have received over 4,000 responses from the school community to assist in generating this strategic plan. As you can see in the outline, we began our work in the fall of 2020, and have made continuous progress, readily building our momentum towards a finished product. We have conducted leadership workshops, created and distributed surveys to the school community, drafted and updated the district mission and vision statement, reviewed outcomes and metrics of surveys and focus groups, and currently are in the editing and drafting phase of the strategic plan. We are excited that the strategic plan will be operational and available to share with the community in the fall of 2022. The mission and vision was presented to the community in the fall of 2021, and garnered a satisfaction rate of over 90% from the 4,000 respondents. I'd like to read them once again. Our mission reads as, "The Smithtown Central School District provides a safe, supportive, and stimulating environment for students to learn where all are valued. We are committed to educating well-rounded, lifelong learners who are compassionate, responsible, and ethical members of society." Our vision reads as, "Smithtown Central School District's vision is to support each child in developing the fundamental academic and life skills needed to reach their maximum potential. The district's goal is to encourage a love of learning in students, while fostering confidence, integrity, respect for others, and a sense of purpose and belonging." integrity, respect for others, and a sense of purpose and belonging." Our core beliefs have been identified through the strategic plan. The surveys and strategic planning meetings have all been instrumental in representing these beliefs and values. Community surveys were used to create common values that pertain to the Smithtown Central School District. These values from the Smithtown community were then presented to the Strategic Planning Committee and to the focus groups for their feedback before moving forward. The identified values for our school district surround a commitment to high standards and expectations for our students, respect and citizenship for all members of our school community, responsibility and integrity through honesty, hard work, accountability to ourselves and to those around us, and being student-centered and collaborative, which is evidenced through providing positive educational experiences for our students while creating and maintaining a school community which works together. These values and beliefs assist in guiding our work and providing the structure to the strategic plan. I'll now turn over to Dr. Simmons to explain the next phase of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Following an analysis of the strategic survey data as well as the insights provided by the focus group discussions held with Dr. Jennifer Coysen from K-12 Insight, the committee has developed possible focus areas and goals. When it comes to teaching, learning, and instruction, we will provide high-quality and innovative curriculum, instruction, and learning. Our goal is to have our students prepared to select and succeed in their chosen path beyond high school and grow every year towards their personal goals. With regards to students' social and emotional well-being, we will provide a safe and inclusive environment that supports and meets the needs of the whole child. Our goal is to have our students demonstrate skills and attributes to cope with life challenges and achieve personal well-being. When it comes to district, the district's school and staff effectiveness and engagement, we will recruit, develop, and retain high-quality, engaged administrators and teachers and staff. Our goal will be to have our staff feel valued, are fully vested in student success, and that they receive the support that they need to be highly effective employees. In short, we want to hire the very best for the amazing students that we have here in Smithtown. The next focus area is parent and community engagement and satisfaction. Our goal will be to strengthen family, district, school, and community partnerships to support student growth and to ensure that our families and community members are valued and collaborative partners in promoting student success. The next steps as we proceed forward in our partnership with K-12 Insight, well, this summer, we will continue to make edits and revisions in our draft strategic plan and design. K-12 Insight will be delivering our final strategic plan in September of twenty-twenty-two. The board will adopt the strategic plan, providing that they carry the votes in fall of twenty-twenty-two. And we will operationalize and share strategic plan with the community and begin the implementation in the fall, once we have board approval towards that. We're looking forward to being able to share this work and the outcomes, so this way we can try to make a difference in our students' lives. Thank you.
Up next, we have, once again, Ms. Christine LeFries, our Director of Career and Technical Education, to provide you with an update on her work associated with career and technical education.
Good evening.
How you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Back up here again.
Yeah.
Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about the opportunities available to the students through the CTE department. We are very fortunate to have such a comprehensive program that provides real-world connections for our students. A little background on me, I am a graduate of Smithtown High School East, I have two children in the district, I worked in the business world as an accountant before I came back to Smithtown to be a business teacher and now in the role of CTE director because of the exceptional programs that we offer here in Smithtown. In the CTE department, we have many educators that have come from various professions and they bring real-world experiences to the students to enhance the learning that goes on in the classroom. In CTE, we provide career pathways that connect to career opportunities. Why is CTE so important? CTE provides students with opportunities to enhance their learning and work collaboratively with other academic areas to develop skills to be successful in the twenty-first century. Students enrolled in CTE courses report being more satisfied with their education because they can explore various career clusters and start to narrow their interest in what they may want to pursue in college and the workplace. CTE is an entirely elective area and we have over two thousand students enrolled in courses from grades nine through twelve. As you can see, we have many opportunities in the three areas and I will go into each one as I go more detail into each department. We'll start with the School of Business. We have a very robust School of Business offering over twenty courses and the opportunity for students to earn up to forty-five college credits in various career clusters. We offer a wide array of courses from basic foundation skills such as keyboarding and computer applications to accounting, finance, marketing, personal financial management, sports, fashion, and a very extensive career program. We also are excited to have two New York State-approved CTE pathways. We have one in marketing currently for students and we will be having one in accounting and finance starting next year. And they can be used for graduation requirements and also an additional endorsement on a student's diploma. These show prospective employers and colleges that a student took additional courses, participated in internships, and passed an assessment in an area they are interested in majoring in. We also have the largest DECA club in New York State. We participate in enrichment opportunities such as our Business Olympics and Business Etiquette Dinner. We strive to give our students the best experience possible to support them and help them to achieve success. Some pictures of some of the happenings in our department. As part of providing students with unique opportunities, as you can see on this slide, we do that in various ways. We take the students on field trips to enhance curriculum. For example, this year, the fashion classes, we're able to go to the Met to see a fashion show. Our VE students participated in a trade show at the Eastwind. Students in the Fashion Club in the bottom right are, they actually did a runway show at the PTSA Fashion Show at West. We partnered with the Smithtown Green team in our college marketing class to create the logo and slogan that the team is using now. I worked with Mrs. Finger with that, it was great. And one of the capstone events in our department is the Business Olympics. I'm not playing the videos because of time, they'll be on the presentation later, you can see them. But the students, as you can see there in the finals, they're getting up on stage, presenting in front of a group of the business people and judges in the auditorium. And it's just amazing to see them work together in teams, they're presenting to a panel of judges, they're incorporating technology, teamwork, and decision-making. It is an event that our students always talk about as something that was so helpful to them when they go to college because not too many schools have these opportunities for the students. And I know some of you have participated as judges and can attest to, to what it does for, for them.
Guys, welcome to the block.
Sorry, okay. High School Heroes Junior Achievement is another program that we have where we work with the elementary students. We've been doing this for about ten or fifteen years now with Junior Achievement. And the high school students go into kindergarten and second grade classes and they teach lessons to them on civic consciousness, community members, financial management. And it's a great experience for both the high school students and the elementary students. Actually, both my daughters got to participate in it. And it really teaches them leadership, teamwork, and they get up and they're the teachers for the day with the elementary students. And the kids love seeing them there, so they're like rock stars to the elementary kids. So that's another authentic experience we have for them. And then we have our Virtual Enterprise Program, which has really grown over the last five to six years, actually countywide. We are fortunate that we have two firms, one at High School East and one at High School West, True Blues at West, Seasonals at High School East. And it's really a very authentic learning experience because the students participate and they run the class. They basically are every department, they're doing the marketing, they're deciding what products they want to sell. You could see the pictures there for some of the trade shows that we've been to in the past. And they actually, they create everything, they have to sell, you come around with fake credit cards and you can buy merchandise. And it really is amazing to see what they actually accomplish and they, they are doing. And when you speak with them, you wouldn't know you're speaking to high school students. So we're looking to continue to, to grow that in the future. And then you heard a little bit about our Marketing Club, DECA. It's one, as I mentioned, one of the largest clubs in our school. We participate in many activities, we have local, state, and national competitions. And as I mentioned, I was a former business teacher before in this role. And for the twenty years I was in the department, we've always had students place and go to nationals, like where, where we have very competitive kids that really rise to the occasion and we have advisors and teachers that work really hard with them. And you could see the pictures there of the kids that have placed in the different activities. They also participate in community service, fundraising, and it teaches them time management, it teaches them professionalism, collaboration, community service, networking, resume. I mean, you meet these kids and they just really blow you, blow me away with what they do. And again, this is all done outside of their school day. So I'm just playing a quick couple of seconds from High School East.
Hi, I'm Megan Riley and I'm this year's DECA president. Today, the officers and I are going to be talking a little bit about what DECA is and why you should join.
DECA allows you to learn public speaking skills, gain career experience and opportunities, practice job interviews, and network with local business professionals.
Joining DECA also allows you to create new friendships. By joining the club and attending events, you will be able to meet so many new people and create so many strong friendships.
DECA also has many community service and fundraising events to help your community.
So that's just a little snippet of what the students have to say about getting involved. We also have our School of Business Honor Society, where we have our New York State Business Honor Society that we induct the students at the etiquette dinner. And we also have our personal higher degree, our PhD. I know Mr. Stevens has been at the etiquette dinner before. And it really is a unique opportunity. Our IAB members sponsor the students and they get to practice their networking skills and actually how to behave at a business dinner. And you learn some things that you might not have known from some of our etiquette experts that have been there before. So again, another unique experience to really work on those soft skills. We also do job interviewing, resume-writing workshops, and career speakers, and we have a large community connection as well. Now we'll move into Family and Consumer Sciences. Over the years, we really have grown and expanded the opportunities available to our students in Family and Consumer Sciences. And I like the quote that we have in the box up there, "Real skills for real life." In the middle school, here's an example of some of the topics that we cover, sixth grade, goal-setting, peer pressure, hand sewing and machine sewing, because, you know, it's the first introduction for the sixth grade is coming from elementary school. So we really try to work, focus in on those skills and friendships and kind of how to get yourself acclimated to the middle school. And then they love making their pillows, that's the pictures, that's there of the pillow projects. And some of them are quite impressive. They do embroidery, I mean, much better than, than I could ever do. I've learned a few things from them in the class. In seventh grade, we move into doing some financial management, nutrition, kitchen safety, and we start cooking, as you can see, two students there with their personal pizzas, that's their favorite thing to make, that and pretzels and chocolate chip cookies. And we, we infuse those skills with the financial management and, and rights and responsibilities of consumers. And then moving into eighth grade, we focus a little bit more in careers, entrepreneurship, meal planning, some additional food and safety. We do a food truck, because, you know, they all love to watch all the food shows, so we do a food truck project with them and they like doing that. And some childcare and babysitting, because some of the kids are starting to get into that. So that's a little bit of the skills that kind of spirals them into the high school, which here, and there's links up there on the presentation to take you to all the courses that we have in the high school, as well as we now have two New York State-approved CTE pathways in Family and Consumer Science as well. One in human development for this year, and next year, I'm very happy, we will have one in food and nutrition. You know, the student, the children are getting much more interested in what they eat and their exercise and how important it is for their mental well-being that we were able to get this implemented. And a big part of getting that approved by New York State was the food science course that we offer. For the last couple of years, we introduced that. And the next, yeah, next year, the students can get four college credits for that food science and some of them can also use it for their third credit of science. We run a childcare, I mean, a nursery program in child development, which is wonderful to see. Actually, my two daughters were in it when they were little. And the high school kids run, they're the teachers, they plan, they do everything. It's so nice to have the little ones back in, in the classroom now. And they, they do everything, they, they purchase the supplies, they're, they're just, they run it like they're the teachers. And the, the Family and Consumer Science teacher is there to facilitate with them. So that's a great room to walk into, especially during the day, seeing all the little ones running around and being so excited. And then we have some interior design as well. On the food side, we have the Chef's Choice classes, you could see they make some really good food, baking, we're adding a baking too because we had such an interest. And then we have clothing construction. I like, we picked this picture in the middle because this is really what the Family and Consumer Science teachers are doing. You know, it's not just about what they're making, it's about all of those other connections to the other curriculum that we see. So you see students cooking and sewing, they see reading, measuring, math, science, following directions, collaboration, listening, and problem-solving. So these are skills that last a lifetime, which is so true, and I know we can all, you know, it's test to that. We have competitions in our food classes, grilled cheese challenge, cupcake wars, pizza challenge. I have to tell you, they put a list out to the teachers and it fills up like that for the sign-up to kind of get the food and, and choose the winners. And they're very creative with that. Co-curricular, we have FCCLA, which is our middle school. We now have chapters in every middle school and the two high schools. So some of the things they get involved in at middle school, they do fundraising, charitable events, team building and competitions, there are some pictures of some of the things they get there. And it's just making them better citizens and, you know, to learn about their community and how important it is. And then in high school, same thing, we get involved in fundraisers, we do food drives, we had an annual wellness fair. We made, at High School West, they did a homemade pie sale for the holidays for the staff. And we started a elementary fruit and veggie challenge. So again, making that connection with the elementary schools, that we hit every elementary school and that we send videos to them, the high school students taught them about eating healthy. And then we picked a winning class from every elementary school and they got a prize for how many fruits and veggies they ate. So that was pretty cool. And then we made window shirts for pediatric cancer patients for the ports that they have and we donated those, so they sewed those and, and made those. So making those connections is important for them. So that's a little snapshot of facts. And then moving into technology, we've really revamped our middle school technology program over the years. We have incorporated Project Lead the Way into our entire middle school curriculum. In grade six, students take twenty weeks of technology, ten are tech-lit, where they do digital citizenship, CAD, research, and then ten weeks of science of technology where they're focused on chemistry, physics, and nanotechnology and engaged in hands-on activities. In grade seven, they focus on technical drawing by hand and with CAD. And their culminate, culminating project involves them designing, engineering, and building prototypes of toys for children with special needs. So they do the research and they learn about that. In eighth grade, they focus on robotics and you could see there, they learn gear ratios and programming to perform a specific task. So the curriculum empowers students to solve real-world challenges and inspire them to reimagine how they see themselves. They also have the opportunity to take two electives, flight and space and energy and the environment in grade seven, once we don't have the, the study halls in, in middle school, and in eighth grade, green architecture and magic of electrons. So again, two more Project Lead the Way units that the students can use. We also have community connections, they help build the sets for the plays in many of the schools. And there you see them working with the E&amp;L students and they worked on those signs that's at a Comset Middle School in all the different languages, they worked on building them. And then we have Middle School First Lego League, you saw the high school kids here, this is where they start in middle school. We have it at a Comset, Great Hollow, and Nessa Quake. And then high school, the course guide is linked there as well. We really have expanded our high school program. We have Project Lead the Way courses in engineering and computer-integrated manufacturing, as well as robotics, which prepares students who want to major in engineering or computer science using CAD-designed software, 3D printers, laser engravers, and CNC machines. I mean, you walk into those shops, I mean, I put a couple of pictures up there and it's just amazing what our students have access to and how well-prepared they are for majoring in these fields, especially manufacturing. Every Long Island company comes to us and says how they would need manufacturers and they need these students to go into these fields, so we're really focusing on that. They really prepares them for college and career. We also support the trades and courses in construction, automotive, small engines, and computer repair and cybersecurity. And we have a new course next year, DIY Introduction to Trades, which we're going to cover a little bit of everything, including plumbing, construction, basic auto and electrical. And you could see the shops that we have, they make Adirondack chairs in the wood shop. And this year, they made one that they donated to Relay for Life that you were talking about that they use for this weekend. So it, it was nice. And then you know about the robotics team, so I'm going to skip over that because the kids did a much better job than I can ever do explaining about the team and the skills that they've learned. I just think the one takeaway from the robotics for me was, oh, when I first started getting involved in it, not being a tech person, was how much it involved so many skills besides being the tech person. involved so many skills besides being the tech person. They have the kids that want to program and code, but they have the kids that do the website, that are part of the business program. And then they, the teamwork, the collaboration, making mistakes, the critical thinking is really, is really amazing to see those kids work. And then new this year, they mentioned it a little bit in their presentation, they came up with this Get Set for Success, Smithtown Engineering and Technology. And I also oversee the STEM specialists in the elementary school for Project Lead the Way. And we, in speaking with them and the high school team, we came up with going to all the elementary schools this year and presenting to the fifth graders about the robotics team, so that when they do their coding unit in, their robotics unit in grade five, they now can understand the reasons why they're doing it. So we went right when they were doing it, and it made that connection for them. And it was wonderful. The kids, as you can see, they got very excited. And the high school kids were, were very excited to work with them as well. And we have a tech honor society, and we have an esports and gaming club as well in the technology department. So we really try to hit everyone. And then the last thing that falls under CTE, but probably the most important for us, is our Smithtown Industry Advisory Board. Some of you have members, some of you have been to the meetings before. But they really are our partnership with the community. I know many of the departments have talked about making those, those connections. And we have over 200 active partners that are involved with us. They help us with mentoring, guest speaking, sponsorship, scholarships. They judge Business Olympics, Business Etiquette Dinner, our business awards. They really enjoy being with our students, hosting, shadowing. They work with the robotics team, the DECA kids, the FCCLA kids. So these are a list of just some of them. But we, Mary Pat Graffstein, who's our current Industry Advisory Board Coordinator, who is retiring, she has done a wonderful job of continuing the mission of what Sue Gubing had started, and really getting these partners involved. And what, they love working with our kids. And this year, we celebrated our 45th anniversary at the Business Etiquette Dinner. So we've been in existence. We are the oldest and largest industry advisory board on the island. So we really are pioneers in Smithtown for many of the things we do in CTE. Not too many schools have the depth of programs that we have. So I feel very fortunate to be working, you know, here and being able to do that. And then just, I know some other departments, and we've mentioned this in other meetings, the alumni, you know, they're really, they're the proof of what we're doing and if we are successful or not. And I just put some up here on these next couple of slides. I'm not reading them, just so that you have them there, just to show how many. We have hundreds and hundreds of alumni that come back and just talk to us about all of the things that they learned in our courses, participating in DECA, Business Olympics, the Family and Consumer Science courses that they took, the technology being part of that, and all of the colleges that they've gone to, and how much it has helped them when they went to college, and then their careers. So they really are, that we're showing our skills are transferable, you know, and really, we love when they come back and tell us these stories. And lastly, you know, I really need to thank my staff. I have some of them, they weren't happy when I put together, I didn't show them this, their pictures on the presentation. But I really would, I really have amazing teachers, my instructional specialists, they work very hard. They're always willing to go above and beyond. We put a lot of time in, as does everyone outside of the day, for the program and the students. They really want what's best for them. They truly believe what we do and how beneficial it is to the students. And we really pride ourselves on always being steps ahead of other districts on Long Island for CTE. So I want to thank you for your support and guidance throughout and allowing us to be able to do all this. So thank you.
Wow, Mrs. Lefries.
Sorry, I know that was fast, but I had a lot to go through, and I know it's late.
That was great. That was great. I think the first thing that jumps out to me is just the possibilities that are offered, you know, to really suit anybody's interests. And the more we give them, the more possibilities that, you know, kids have to do whatever they, you know, want, really.
Yeah.
And follow their dreams, or even, maybe even find something that they might not have thought they were interested in.
Yep.
You know, and so, there's so many different things. And that's, I think, probably one of the most impressive things with your presentation. I always love the fact when high school kids can go down to elementary school and, you know, just, you see the little guys' faces light up when they see the, the high school kids. And, you know, it just creates connections, whether it be the high school kids looking forward to, you know, going to, to really teach the little guys, or, you know, just the anticipation of seeing, you know, the older kids come to the elementary school. So that's always awesome.
No, it is. Especially when they clap, the teachers clap. They always find that amazing, that everyone gets quiet. And I know, I used to try to go back in, and I used to try that in my classes, and it didn't work as well as it does in elementary school, but.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the presentation, and very impressive.
Thank you.
Matt, if you don't mind me adding, first of all, Christine, your humbleness, you know, the things that you do behind the scenes to support this program, you know, are, it's instrumental to our success.
Thank you.
You know, the active participant that you are, you are at everything. Your teachers can lean on you for everything that you need. You're always looking for the next best idea. One of the things that I think you've done a beautiful job is really welcoming our community and, and local businesses to partner with you, to partner with our kids. And I don't mean to embarrass Mr. Foster, but anytime I am at a Business Olympics, an etiquette dinner, he's either there with the kids, donating his time, supporting the kids financially, so they're there. But seeing so many people in our community, you know, giving an opportunity for people like Mr. Foster and so many others that want to give back and, and have so much to offer, I think that makes our program so special. So please know how much we all appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And thanks to all of our parents, Mr. Foster, our partners, our community, you know, that really step up and give our kids that hands-on experience.
No, they really do. We couldn't do what we do without your support, administration, and, and the community. And we're very grateful. And my teachers, a lot of them are still here, sitting in the audience. So they came out to be supportive. So they're, that's how they, that's how they are.
It doesn't work without them.
We're like a family. No, it does not.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Especially robotics. People have no idea the amount of time that team spends with the kids, all days, weekends, nights, travel. I'm sure their families are pulling to get them back home. But, you know, the things that they do for our kids around the clock, it's truly unbelievable. It's an example of, you know, how great teachers can be and how great some of our teachers here in Smithtown truly are. So thank you to you as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
If I may, I couldn't agree more. I took a great deal of pride in our work in these areas in my previous two districts. But this is next level. The sheer depth and breadth of the opportunities you afford students, it's phenomenal. And when you sent me this presentation, I replied, "You captured the awesome." It's exactly what we're looking for with these presentations, is to share with the community all that is great that is out there, and the work that is done, the joy we see in our students, whether it be here, but especially hit those elementary schools. And I thought the high school kids had as much fun, if not more, than even the elementary students. And you are readying them for whatever it is they choose to do, and that's why we're here. So thank you.
No, it is. No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, up next, we have a resolution. I would ask for the board to vote on setting the annual reorganizational meeting for July 1st at 11:00 a.m.
You have a motion to approve item 10C?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Yes. The, I guess I'm not understanding why the reorganizational meeting is being moved. It's set by the state to be on June 5th. And I don't understand why, you know, just an explanation as to why you're moving it to the first would be fantastic.
I'll explain it again publicly. I think I tried to do that with our board communication as well. But if we do it publicly also, that's fine. I believe it's the district policy that states the reorganizational meeting should be on the first Tuesday in July. Every so oft-
State policy.
Every so often, there's a conflict with July 4th, where, you know, we have, that Tuesday either falls on July 4th, or the next day, the day before, either way. And there was conflicts this year with people that had family plans or family vacations that were scheduled already. So in an effort to try to find a mutual date where everybody would be able to attend, that was what, what transpired. And unfortunately, we weren't able to find a, a date that worked for everybody. So we were able to put a resolution that where we would move the reorganizational meeting to July 1st, not stating that any one trustee is more important than one another. But at the reorganizational meeting, I believe one of the things the community expects, and we look to highlight, is the swearing-in of either newly-elected or re-elected board members. And that's one of the things where we were looking to find a date to fit that. So I hope that you understand. And it's not a slight on anybody, but.
I would really like to offer a compromise, if possible. So-
I believe we tried that several times.
July 5th was the date of the state-mandated meeting, actually. I, I understand Mike and Mike want to be sworn in in front of their friends and family, and I would not deny them that. I think they should. Stacy and I were sworn in last year in the boardroom on July 1st, as is allowed. So if they are available on July 1st, could they please do their swearing-in on the 1st with their family, friends, and whoever else would like to come? And then keep the reorganization meeting on the 5th. So there were five people available on the 5th. Again, this meeting has been set since last year. I mean, next, I, I know next year's meeting is July 11th. I hope nobody makes plans for next July 11th. All right? It's always the second Tuesday of July.
First Tuesday.
I'm sorry, the first Tuesday of July. This is the second, because of the 4th of July falls on that date. But it seems like, truly, you're saying that it's more important to move it to a date when two people are available, that another two aren't available.
Next year is up in the air. You're saying it could, it could be July 11th. I don't know. It's gotta be, it has to be, it doesn't have to be. It has to be done in, within the first 15 days. Hold on one second. It could be done depending on what the calendar looks like. You know, we have the ability to move it to a mutual date where we are able to move district business, and also, like I said, swear in newly-elected or re-elected trustees.
But you can do the swearing-in on July 1st without moving the reorganizational meeting?
Well, either date that was suggested, the several dates that were suggested, was not going to achieve 100% attendance by the board members' responses.
So, and I think it would be a fair compromise if you did the swearing-in on the 1st and the reorganizational meeting on the 5th.
Therefore, we chose July 1st as one of the, the best appropriate date to hold the reorganizational meeting.
So on July 5th, five of us can come. Is that correct?
I don't know that.
Yes. Okay, well, that was in our commu-, right.
I don't know.
Okay, well, we all determined that together in an email system that-
We just had conflicts where not everybody was able, excuse me, Mrs. Murphy.
I know, I was talking though.
I'm trying to set the record straight. There were several dates that were put out. None of them were able to achieve 100% attendance.
And five people confirmed they could make it on July 5th at the reorganizational meeting. And five people confirmed, a different five, that they could meet on July 1st.
I looked through the emails, and I did not count five. I don't even believe you let me know what you were able to attend or not.
Because I can do either.
So then how do you know you had five?
Because I know, I can count, and I'm the 5th. So I just-
We all can count. And it, and in the past, when we've had a board that was willing to work together, that we would be able to set at this meeting, a date that we can all come together. And typically, we have a date that we all select. It doesn't always have to be the first Tuesday. And we've, we're able to work together to find a mutual date. Mike and I were just re-elected. I expect to be at the reorganization meeting, you know, as does Mike. We are unable to attend on the 5th. And I, and I put out a very nice asking email, asking to see who could make it, and we can find a compromise. So at the reorganization, we set leadership, we set all these different things, and I expect to be a part of that, as does Mike. I don't want to speak.
I believe, I believe the community expects you to be there as well.
Okay, and, and I responded that I can't be there July 1. Okay, especially at 11 o'clock. I said I might be able to make-
We know you're a busy guy.
Can I, can I finish, please? Thank you, Matt. I said I might be able to make between 4 to 5 o'clock. But being that I have a bunch of agents that'll be going on vacation, I'll be in a lot of coverage, I won't know until the day or two before. But apparently, that wasn't picked up. It was just said the 11. So I guess I just don't matter.
Like I said before, I said not one trustee is more important than the other. But I did say the rationale as to why, to come to a date where we would be able to get our newly-reelected board members sworn in.
Mike, can you explain to me why, I understand why you want to be at the reorg meeting. All seven of us do. Everybody does. So whether you got elected this year or last year, it doesn't, everybody wants to be there. Everybody expects to be there, and everybody deserves to be there. So can you explain to me why moving the date because you deserve to be there is any different than moving the date so he can? Because he deserves to be there too. So just explain that part to me.
So when we put this, when we put this out, there was no other offers, except for you said, sent us back the board policy, that it says it has to be the first Tuesday of the month. That's what she sent back. We tried to find a date that we could all do, and that did not, and that, no, let me finish. That was not successful. You know, so we're sharing partial stories here. We looked to find a day that we all could work.
And we couldn't do it, right? We couldn't find a date that we could all-
We couldn't. That's why we have a resolution here for July 1st, which we will vote on shortly.
I'm, I'm still discussing. So I can still have that opportunity. So the, the policy states that the reorg meeting has to happen in the first 15 days. That can't be, right? That has to happen, first 15 days. Okay. So because of everyone's personal schedules-
Unless there's a board resolution.
Okay. So because of everyone's per, oh, wait, so we can have it after July 15th? That's what, okay, so let me restate that. The reorg meeting has to happen within the first 15 days of July. That's correct, right? Okay. So because of everyone's personal schedules, and we all have that. We have families, we have vacations. I don't think anybody should be frowned upon because they're going away with their family, for crying out loud. So we have to do within the first 15 days. People have family vacations going on. We came up, there was two dates, it seemed, the 5th, the date that's in the policy, that two people can't make. And then the only other date that would work because of people's vacations, the only other date in the first 15 days was July 1st. So we can't throw out any other dates, because everyone indicated that there was no date that all seven could be there.
You never indicated what worked for you.
Because I did both.
But you're saying, you're saying you have specific dates on who can attend what, but you never-
No, I'm just going based on what-
I'm just, I'm just saying what you, the information you gave us. You never told us, or me, what you're able to attend. So you're kind of contradicting yourself.
Can you stop, Matt, all I'm saying is you have 15 days to have the meeting. We have the 1st and the 5th available. Why are we moving it from the 5th, when five people can attend, to the 1st, when a different five can attend?
I explained that at the beginning.
No, but you didn't explain, explain why, no. Explain why Mike and Mike have to be there, and they don't.
I did.
No, no, you didn't. Not the reorg.
I did. You might not liked it, but I did.
I never confirmed that I was available on the 5th.
What was that, Mrs. Murphy? I couldn't hear you. It is? Okay. All right. Well, you know what? When you have people that are unwilling to work with each other, yes, that's what it turns into. I'm sorry. I, who do you think, who do you think tried to come up with the mutual date? Who do you think tried to come up with the mutual date for everybody?
Can I just quickly respond, and then we can put this to a vote?
And that's exactly what we did. Exactly what we did. People that are, that are getting sworn in.
In, in years past-
But they can be sworn in on the 1st, and that would be a compromise.
In years past, when I've been on this board, there was absolutely no issue with picking a new date, right? We would say, "Hey, by the way, I'm not available this day. I'm not available this day. I'm not available this day. Let's find a date within the first two weeks that work." Right? And it was a very, very simple and easy response. Okay. And everybody made it work. Good. Now, we have an email that goes out that says-
You're throwing out things that's not accurate and that's not fair. You're talking about trying to find a meeting date at the end of the school year, which you are extremely aware that it's nearly impossible with everybody's calendars and any year of events, trying to find that.
Can I, can I just finish?
All right, let's just vote, let's just vote.
It's just not, it's, you know, and the fact that, just excuse me, Mike, the fact that we're sitting here arguing like this in public, on camera, that's being broadcast live is an embarrassment. We need to go back to focusing on what we're here, that's the best interest of kids, and focusing on bringing our community back together. Enough is enough.
I second that, Mr. Sadens. I second that.
So, Mike, if you want, if that's what you want to do, you want to get back to focusing on that, then could we please make a compromise? Right.
Reorg meeting, Karen. Either, I'm not missing it.
So she has to?
With that being said, any other further comments?
How about she, what if we say to my-
Any other further comments?
But you have, how can you say that? I'm not missing it. You miss it.
Mrs. Murphy, I said, I said at the beginning, and I said during emails, not one trustee is more important than the other.
I'm asking Mike. 11 o'clock on a Friday? This is ridiculous.
If I, if I, can I, can I just finish my thought, please? So when we had the email, we, just as we've had in years past, "Hey, who's available when? I got the 5th, maybe the 1st." Okay. It was a couple of emails going back and forth. And the one response that we received was, "Here's our policy. It'll be the 5th unless we vote otherwise." We didn't receive anything else, no other dates. "Here's our policy. That's it. I'm here, I'm available on the 5th. We have five people available on the 5th. That's all I'm willing to do." So here we are. We have four and three, and we know that there's a divide here. I don't understand why we would take those positions ever, but we are. So here we are. We've, we're now in a position where we have to vote, because that's what you asked for.
All right, well, my response was, okay, I can't do 11, but I can possibly do 3 and 4, but I won't know a day or two before, because I run a business and people rely on me to be there. And I have a bunch of agents that will not be in, they'll take a vacation. And it's in my NASA office, not the one in, in Smithtown. But you know what? That being said, just vote, and let's put it to bed.
Sounds like a plan. All those in favor? Mr. Marcello?
Can we, and I don't know everyone's schedule, can we amend it to do it at 4 o'clock? And if, then we have the sixth person, great, and if we can't-
We have people not able to be there at 4.
We have people not able to be there at 11.
Like I said, there's not a perfect date. Like I said, there's not a perfect date, so that's what we have to do. We have to...
That's fair as well. 11 o'clock on a Friday, some of us work. So, if it could be later in the afternoon, perhaps...
There's no mutually agreeable day for everybody.
For you guys.
So, all right, we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4 to 3. Reorg will be July 1st at 11 o'clock, right here in New York Avenue Auditorium. Not everything has to be a challenge, which we're trying to work together to figure this all out.
But you're not trying to work with us, Matt.
No, I beg to differ. I beg to differ.
Matt, I mean, we're asking for a couple hours later in the day.
I've asked for several compromises. Nobody's willing to work for that, so here we are. Okay? Dr. Secor?
Yes, up next, we have some calendar notifications. On Monday, June 20th is Juneteenth. And schools are closed, but the central office will be open. On Thursday, June 23rd, we have High School East and High School West graduations scheduled for 5 o'clock. Should there be an issue with weather, they would be rescheduled for the same time the next day, the 24th. And on June 28th, we have regular meeting in the Board of Education, where we'll go into executive session at 7:00 PM. And the regular meeting is to reconvene at 8:00 PM. Up next, we had policies that were on the agenda, but I believe those were addressed during the committee reports.
Yeah, we still have one, though. 5150? 5151, excuse me. Correct. Dr. Simmons?
One of Mike's favorite albums.
So, with the first reading, we just mentioned, we're speaking of it. We're not voting on anything, though. Correct. Okay. Sounds good. Anything else in your superintendent's report? Dr. Secor? What's that? Yeah. No, I don't think we have to do that. It's in the agenda. So, cool. All right. Mrs. O'Connor, do we have anybody signed up for the consent agenda items of public participation?
No.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. Does any board member wish to remove any items from the consent agenda as we look to vote on it as a whole?
I don't want to remove anything, but there's something I'd like to speak to about the early voting with the Board of Elections.
Yep.
I understand there's no school in session at that time and we are beholden to the Board of Elections. But I think it's time we start having conversations about moving the elections out of the school buildings. At the school board election, I went to my school building where I'm supposed to vote and security was there, they were watching, they were keeping an eye, but the kids were still walking around, the doors were open. And I think it's important we start working on getting the elections out of the school buildings when school's in session.
I think those are valid concerns. I think it definitely is deserving of a conversation on exploring some options. Are you wishing to remove that item, though?
No, I'm not. No, because there's no school in session that day.
Okay. Anybody else looking to remove an item from the consent agenda? Without any removals, we have a motion to approve consent agenda items 13 through 18.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Secor, you have some highlights for us. I'll turn it over to Mr. Katz.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Secor. Mr. Griven, I would like to mention a few items tonight that the board did approve. Appointments of some individuals, and I'd like to welcome them to our staff and congratulate them. If any of these folks are still with us this evening, if you would please stand to be recognized. Michael Harvey is a science teacher who was with us this year, will be back with us next year in a different capacity. Tony Cohn, an E&amp;L teacher. Sarah Campbell in health. Carissa I in physical education. And Vincenza Patron in physical education. All right, congratulations and welcome aboard. And of course, we had three phys ed and health combination folks on. And it's more, even more appropriate then that the board did approve the appointment of our new coordinator for athletics, physical education, health nurses, and whatever else Dr. Simmons can come up with for you, Jason. Congratulations, welcome aboard as an administrator, Jason Lambert. Congratulations, welcome to our team.
Congratulations. I'm extremely excited to hear about all the great things that you guys do in the district in the future. All the best. I would like to highlight quickly in the consent agenda, the board approved a couple extremely generous donations. One by Mrs. Sill and the Greg W. Sill Foundation, and the other by the High School West Classroom General Organization for the Greg Sill Scholarship. We also received another scholarship donation by the Suffolk County Chapter of the New York State School Facilities Association. Anytime the district's able to, you know, receive gifts from community members or organizations, we're extremely grateful. And we thank you for those generous donations. Appreciate it. Moving on, new business. Does any board member have any new business items?
I got something. I wanted to mention earlier, but I forgot. I received an email and it's in reference basically to the buses. Right now, I mean, you get an Amazon delivery, everybody knows where the truck's going to be. We had that driver here who was awarded because he saw a child sitting still. Is there any way we could speak to our bus company or have transportation speak to them about maybe providing an app for the parents? And also for the students, a lot of students currently have cell phones where they can see where their bus is so they know if the bus is not coming, maybe call somebody instead of just sitting at the bus stop and waiting off a bus breaks down. It's a simple app. Parents can have access to it and also children who have cell phones. So, they know exactly where the bus is and when the bus is coming. It's just for additional safety for our children.
That's a conversation we can have and we've actually been discussing just that within our communications committee. And we've been talking to some very industrious students regarding an app that they've created that would be a great communication tool for our students that the parents could potentially access as well. Certainly, that would involve...
Alumni, right there?
I'm sorry?
Alumni, Dr. Secor?
Alumni, yes. Two High School West graduates, one who just graduated from Notre Dame and the other one's still at Notre Dame. Very impressive young men and we look forward to introducing this concept in greater detail moving forward. But certainly with the bus company, because they would have to, you know, play a role and to see if they have the existing technology. And if not, you know, to what extent could they add it and would that cost be pushed on to us? So, it is a good conversation to have.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
If they want our business, they'll have to do it because kids face it comes first all the time.
Thank you. Any other items for new business?
The resolutions, Matt, the NISBA resolutions? Weren't they under new business?
They are. Did you want to bring them up?
Okay, yes. We need to discuss whether or not we want to support them and if we want to join the other Nassau Suffolk boards in sending our agreement with the resolutions or disagreement up to the state.
Would you like to introduce some of the resolutions to the community?
Let's see. Proposition 1 has to do with the reserve fund amendments to eliminate the use of short-term borrowing. Proposition 2, special education advocacy oversight. Proposition 3, local control. Proposition 4, parental rights. Proposition 5, religious exemption. Proposition 6, single occupancy zoning. Proposition 7, sex education.
Just to be clear to the public, I think these are propositions that were, that you're proposing to send to NISBA to be voted on potentially. NISBA would then potentially accept these as propositions that would be added to a list that would be voted on at their annual meeting.
Correct. The same, you know, like the propositions, you know, you did the tally sheets last year. Yes.
But these are propositions that have been developed by a coalition.
Okay, and what coalition?
The Nassau Suffolk School Board Coalition that we talked to you guys about. They have the meetings once a month.
Okay. Yeah, would you be able, just to describe to the community what this coalition consists of? Because you've explained it to us, but, you know, we're having a public discussion and we want the community to know what we're talking about. So, would you be able to explain what this coalition is and who is involved?
So, it's just, it's a group of school boards who they have one or two representatives from each board that want to work together, that feel that their strength in numbers and when we can agree on, you know, things like this that we want to go forward and, you know, have districts together saying, I'll throw a number out there, 20 of us, you know, believe these same things and would like you to support these same things when it comes to NISBA. That, you know, we feel like it'd be more advantageous that NISBA sees, oh, wow, 20 districts from Long Island all want the same things. Let's take a look at it. Instead of just one random district from Long Island coming up with a proposition that maybe NISBA doesn't realize that there's a lot of other districts that feel the same way. So, John, Karen, and I have gone to meetings before. They've had them for the past year. It just enables everyone to kind of meet each other and to understand what's going on in different districts, to bounce ideas off each other, to learn about what other districts are doing. And it's a really nice setting that I would really encourage you guys all. I mean, it's kind of annoying because a lot of meetings are in Nassau County, but whatever, if you rotate it, it doesn't seem that bad. They give you cookies too. So, you have a little incentive to get there. But that's what the Nassau Suffolk School Board Coalition is. And so, like I said, we've been going and they, we did not come up with any of these resolutions ourselves. These are resolutions that the other school boards came up with and it was their suggestion, the people who run the committee, that they want, you know, other school boards to vote on it. And they've been asking us, "Could you please bring it back to your school board and vote on it before the end of June so that they can, you know, meet all the dates and the timelines set forth by NISBA for resolutions to be adopted?" So, even if we voted on this, it's obviously not a definite that NISBA's going to adopt any of these. You know, we had just thought that if we agree with them and so do 15 other, 30 other districts that NISBA would listen a little more, knowing that there's more people that feel, or more boards that feel the same way.
Now, is this, is this a request to vote on all seven of these propositions?
No, they're separate. You don't have to. Basically, they're just asking if you want, if you're in agreement with all seven, then they would, I guess, note that it was all seven. However, they submit things to NISBA, I guess, they would show it to us to show that our school district's name on it or Smithtown's in favor of 1, 3, and 5. And then, if the district who wrote number 6 wants to go ahead and do it on their own because nobody else votes to go with them, then they could do it on their own, I guess. It just wouldn't be with anybody else's, you know, name on it.
Right. So, you know, just for instance, like, one, Proposition 1 to me seems like a no-brainer. But I would need to hear, I feel, I would need to hear from Andrew and Andrew's position on that. So, is this something that we can...
Well, we have until the 28th. That's why we wanted it to happen now because we figured, exactly like what you said, people are going to read it. They're going to have questions. To me, it seems like a no-brainer too, but I, I mean, so did, that's what every other school board said when they talked to their... Tobin?
I think that, you know, just, only Suffolk does. This is something that, with TANs, this is something that I know Mr. Tobin and I have spoke to, spoke about several times years ago. And I, you know, even brought it to Suffolk County Comptroller a few years ago about how we can really do away with the Suffolk County districts that have to borrow in the beginning of the school year so that we can fund the payroll right from the start of the year. There's all different types of, now, this is coming from the county comptroller. There's all different types of things that would have to be changed as far as when the towns and county collects taxes and when they would be able to get that money to the districts. So, that would be something I could, yeah, definitely support, but also would look to have conversations with other people to get more information about the realistic possibility of something like this.
Well, again, these are just, you know, to say to NISBA, "Hey, would you read them? Would you think about it?"
For those that haven't been to, I've been to a couple of the, you know, state conferences on it. When you go and there's a voting session on the last day, everybody has a representation from their district. These protocols or these, you know, propositions, well, it's part of their agenda and it will list all the school districts. Sometimes it, you know, Syosse School District put it up or New York City. And our name would be included with any ones that we all agree by a majority.
Right, exactly. That's what they're saying. They're just thinking their strength in numbers and if 15 districts agree on the same thing, why wouldn't we all do it together? That's their point.
Can I just clarify? The one concerning the TANs resolution is school districts aren't currently allowed to borrow from our reserves, short-term borrow from our reserves to help pay, in lieu of borrowing to pay for those. This would allow us to do that.
Correct.
So, to my, there's no problem with it on its surface. It still may not completely eliminate the need if we don't have that much reserves to borrow against.
Right.
But it's, on its surface, I don't see any problem with it. It would allow, the TANs process would still, or the tax collecting process would still continue, but it would allow us to borrow from ourselves, which we currently can't do for whatever reason by law, to help pay for that borrowing. That's the gist.
In terms of number two, for special education oversight, I certainly don't disagree that sometimes the advocates that may come to represent parent aren't really doing what's in the best interest of kids. And sometimes their behaviors can be less than appropriate. But I don't, I don't know if a proposition could, like in theory, I like it, but I don't know if we could put a resolution of who can go and represent a parent at a CSE meeting. You know, so I mean, I think federal law would overtake that in terms of not being, you know, a parent could bring anybody they would like to represent them at a meeting.
I think this was supposed to be in, oh, you don't mean a parent bringing someone to sit next to him. You mean in place of the parent.
Well, like, again, if I wanted, if I had a meeting for my son and I wanted to bring you with me, you know, the committee couldn't tell me that I couldn't.
No, I think this is referring to in place of the parent, like when there's no parent that's coming.
Well, there is no required parent member right now on a CSE. It used to be where a parent member was required and you would waive the parent, uh, person. Now, it's the opposite where you're requesting a parent member because they just weren't able to have enough parent members at it. So, this, the way that I read it, and I could be misreading it, is sometimes that there's people out there that are advocates for families that don't necessarily have the background or the knowledge or experience and come in and don't really push what's best for kids. They're pushing their own personal agenda, which I've run into that, but I don't know if we could tell a parent that they couldn't have somebody specific, you know, there.
Again, I think it's not the parent bringing someone. It's in place of the parent. That whoever serves as the advocate in place of the parent would have to go through some sort of, I don't know, for lack of a better word, hour training or something to understand what exactly you're doing as that advocate.
So, if you're a parent member or you're requesting, they do go through training. I think we could speak to Dan a little bit about that.
Yes, they do go through training to be a parent member. I have to dive into this, but the way I read it as well, it's more of an advocate.
Yes, exactly. That's what I'm saying. It's not a parent member.
Yeah, which is different than a parent member.
Right, exactly.
So, a parent advocate would be someone that the parent brings to a CSE meeting. Currently, a parent can bring anyone they would like to a CSE meeting.
So, maybe we should go back to them because that's not when we sat at the meeting, which is why it's good to just sit there and listen instead of just reading it. The way they explained it, what it was not an advocate. It was not me bringing her to the meeting to help me or to advocate for me while I sit there. It was in place of me so that, you know, somebody would have training. And I guess...
District-appointed advocate.
Right, yeah, a district-appointed advocate. And they were saying that that, I guess, you know, because this is for the state. This is not just for one little town. So, when we're, maybe we do it that way and we require, you know, trainings, but maybe it's not done everywhere.
No, any parent that's going to be the parent member of a CSE has to go through training first. And a parent can request that person to be at the meeting.
Okay, so let me find out what exactly, because the way I understood it, it was not the parent member because I know what those are. And it was not an advocate like "come with me, friend."
The way that I read it as parent advocates is somebody that they're selecting. Yeah, no, I...
Is this something that needs to be discussed in public when we're talking about these resolutions?
Probably not.
Right, because the only reason I say that is because if we're going to put this on for the 28th, I want to be able to have these discussions prior to the 28th and not, you know...
When are we going to do that?
Yeah, I'd also like to talk to, you know, some other, like Dr. Secor and Cabinet and also some other people and just to get some different idea, you know, the meaning of some of these different resolutions. Because, you know, looking at some of them just on the surface, some of them look like no-brainers. But, you know, some of them, you know, there's a lot to be answered. You know, some of the words that are in there can be tricky and...
I would like to bring the religious exemption back. Throwing kids out of school because they don't have a shot is certainly not something fun for any principal, school nurse, or administrator.
What did you say, sir?
I said I'd like to bring back the religious exemption back, you know.
Well, that's in there. That's what I'm saying.
No, I read through it, but maybe we could set something up, maybe a virtual conversation, an executive session discuss.
Yeah.
But I did read them all. There are some things that I agree with, others had some questions.
Yep. Sounds good.
That I just can't agree with the way that they're drafted, but maybe if they're changed or...
Yeah, I think this was just, because we had, they were like little mini bullets almost. And I had said, "That's not going to work." I felt like you guys are... almost, and I had said, that's not going to work, I, I felt like you guys are going to want an actual resolution, so we said to them, can you please write up the actual resolution? So that's what they are, the way it's going to be, so, because I, I thought, how are we going to vote on something where you're like, well, I don't really know if that's the wording?
Right.
So we asked them to please write it up as, and then we could go back and forth.
Steve, if we can also give you a copy of this, you, if you could look it over and just send an email back to the board and Dr. Secor, and just in terms of where there's landmines, you know, and where there's overreach, like, there was, you know, when you're talking about educational program, I mean, that's going to come from the department, but if you can guide us to make sure that we're staying in our lane, uh, but there are a couple things that I would be happy to, to say yes to, and, and to approve.
Karen, would you be able to send those to Mr. Goodstat?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Oh, you did?
All right, great, awesome. Excellent. Any other items for new business? Great.
Oh, you know, I did, sorry, um, the grading thing, I just, it's actually, I don't even know if you guys can answer it, but, um, if you could just have it for next time, um, I'm just wondering, and thank you for sending me that policy, Dr. Secor, but, um, do we, what is the district philosophy on not ranking? I'm just, I don't know, and not having Val and Sal? I'm just wondering why we don't do it? Because the policy states we don't, and I'm just wondering what the philosophy was whenever that was done way back when, or...
That goes back to 2010?
No, so it's not that long ago.
Um, and, just at, at the time, um, the grade point average, GPA was used to determine the rank, uh, in class, alpha grades are assigned quality points, which are used to, uh, to compute GPA, grades earned in advanced placement courses are weighted with an additional 1.0 quality point, and the student must sit for the AP exam in order to, uh, receive a weighted grade. Back at the time, because we were in an alpha system, the basic sentiments that were there was the fact that students who were receiving an A-, would end up having, um, a little bit of a, a challenge when it came to the college admission process, because if you took a look at someone who came in with a high class rank, or if you had a student who came in even with an A-, and a high SAT score, that there was a concern that the colleges were not looking at them, uh, to the best of their ability, uh, and it was not favoring our students itself. This at the time really stemmed, um, from, uh, private schools at the time, um, and we wanted to make sure we were putting our students into the best light as possible. A committee was formed, um, and what the outcome of that was, really taking a look at rigor versus rank, what are the colleges looking for? And the colleges are really looking to have that rigor aspect, and when you had rank, sometimes back then, colleges would just take a look at the rank, and they would start making snap judgments, when you didn't have that ranking aspect, then you had the ability now where you could sit there and they had to take a look at the whole child to really balance rigor. Now, here we are 10 years later, we know at this point, colleges basically take our transcripts, they reweight everything, and they create their own numerics to be able to determine that. At this point in time, uh, the last time we had taken a look at the data for itself, it was roughly online, like, 40% of the high schools did not utilize rank any longer, um, and that's been like a national trend that had been going on over the course of the last decade or so. So that's the, that's the quick version of why that, why that happened going back in 2010.
Okay, and why don't we have Val and Sal?
Because we don't rank.
But...
Even, even years ago, that's something that has been a Smithtown, um, practice for many years, that we don't do with Val and Sal.
Okay, because there are many districts that don't rank, but have Val and Sal anyway, so technically they rank, they just don't go three through the bottom, um, and, I mean, there are some colleges that require your, you know, your ranking, and so, do we give it when it's required? There are some applications that do require it.
Specifically, like, service academies, many times, they will ask for something like that, uh, and the counselors will do their best to be able to provide them what they can do for those students, it's just not, it's not an official practice where we rank students, but we're never going to utilize that to harm any student that's there.
Right, okay.
Any other items for new business? Without any other, Mrs. O'Connor, public participation.
The first speaker is Edward Moore.
Good. You know what I enjoy? That electromechanical group.
Pretty cool, right?
Oh, that's, you know, that almost brought tears to my eyes, because, you know, I come from that field, you know, and to see that at, at a, a, you know, high school level, and this, because those guys, with that, that's the key, if you can actually do that, and then I'm hearing they're doing it, I hope this don't count, but I, my three minutes, but, to see that and have that after-school curricular activity to do that, because the technology's the key, if we can inspire the, and they can get a taste of that, oh, then you inspire, otherwise, everything's just words, you know?
That's exactly what we're doing.
Well, and I, like I said, when I seen that, that made me happy, that really did. You know, I love, I love learning, I love education, I do it all the time, you know, I just love to learn.
Mr. Moore, can you just pick up your microphone, just so we can hear you a little better, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I love to learn, you know, I love education, and I, and I do it all my life, I had to learn the technology when I couldn't get a job after the service, you know, I had to start my own business, and I had to learn, and I was fortunate to have a mentor, a, a job, the guy said, you know, Ed, you know, this don't work, fix this, Ed, I need this, but I want you to do it, I want you to do it, and I had to learn, and if you learn how to learn, that's the key. If you can teach your students to learn without all the nonsense in between, meaning, they had to tell them how to learn, but if they can learn to be, learn for themselves, and then you find that dream, you get, teach them how to learn, that's it. And today, with the internet and all the information, learning, so, I'll leave that. Now, I'll go back to my three minutes, yeah. I got that, my letter here, I'll give it to you. Yeah. Hold on. Good. Okay.
Pause it for a second, Mr. O'Connor.
Ah, there we go. Thank you.
See, this is what I'm going to be saying. Do you want to give him to me? I'll pass him around for you. Yeah.
Great. All right, go ahead, Mrs. O'Connor.
Ah, I'm waking up again, thank you, had to give me a chance to wake up. Now, the superintendent spoke in reference to security, that's my field, I've been in the security field for over 40, even more than 40 years, integrating security, cameras protecting the homes, and I'm fortunate that I have accounts today on Long Island, I did the Who's Who with Lloydneck, Jericho, Terrorists, major, uh, project, I got a project down the counterline, as I'm working out, and what I see here today, what concerns me, is, and thank you for your information about your security system, but from what I understand, what I heard, is you had the, you had the surveillance, you had, and then you have your access control system, you have the ability to integrate all of that. Now, according to an FBI report over here, you got five minutes, you got five minutes before these guys come in there and start shooting your children, okay? Now, the whole key to that is, well, how can we stop that? They have now the analytics and the AI that you can actually use and put onto your surveillance system, which means, you take this, you have all the information feeds from all your camera systems, okay, and you have access control, I heard about that, now, you take all the information that you're getting from your surveillance, you run it through a server that has the analytics and the, and the AI in it, and they have the ability now to detect guns. You actually can detect a gun, there's a SEAL Team guys, four SEAL Team guys, I forgot what SEAL Team number it is, they say started in 2018, okay, they went to the Wharton School of Business, it's four teams, these guys are sharp military guys, so they learned it, they realized that they learned all, and they got, and with AI, you have to learn it. I learned in systems, I only learned the system in a month ago at a person's home, what do you mean by that, Ed? Well, you have residential systems over here, so you, when you put in a security system, of course, you have all these homes, it's just common sense, you have a home, you put a perimeter around there, and if you can extend a perimeter around your home, what do, what do the people want? Ed, I want cameras, I want cameras out there, I want to point it on my lawn, and if anybody walks on my lawn, I want to be detected, can you do that? Yes, you could put tripwires over there, you can actually put things, have object video, you have the technology. Now, you have three of the best companies in the country over here, here, one is called Omni Alert, one is called Zero Alert, and one's called, uh, Eagle Eyes, okay, what I'm, now, what they have the ability to do, they have the analytics, you put it in there, you input it into your system. I spoke to them, I got a report here, I'm going to give it to you, you have the opportunity for these guys to come here, sit behind, I seen how you do it, you, with your board, you put five, six people, I can get the top people, put them right in front of you, I'm going to give you information over here, you can talk to your security people over here, what you got over here, and say, these are the guys we want to talk to, you put them in front, you ask the questions, and they'll look at your system, and they can approve it. Other, you only got five minutes, you got to detect them outside, you don't want them to get in here, once they're in here, you're screwed, you can put all your money you want over here, and put all your, and then the other thing I'm hearing, you can access, you can integrate your access control system with your surveillance system, you know, with that, and that, and your mass notification system, okay, because the other thing is, what you don't want these clowns to do, which they will do, they'll come in here, and they'll blow off something over here, have your guys run out the door, and they'll be sitting over there in the woods over there, shooting your kids down, you got to have your eyes, and you got to know what you're doing.
Mr. Moore, is your information in here? Is that information in this packet?
Oh, I got that here.
Because I know you're getting passed out three minutes, so...
Okay, all right, good, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, wait, now, what, what, did you read the letter, what it says?
You just handed it to us.
Yeah, I know, I know, just read the last, read the last paragraph, if you don't mind, just read the last paragraph, what's it say? Ah, boy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, well, okay, I'll explain what it says, basically, I'm requesting you to put on the agenda, okay, a, a, a date where I can invite these people to actually before...
Mr. Moore, if you can give the superintendent a call, and, uh, discuss...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on, you're the school board, wait a minute.
That's not how this works, though.
What's that?
That's not how this works.
I mean, you, I can't, this is how it works, according to Eagle, uh, Zero Eye, they approached the school board, got the approval, okay, and the reason I'm putting it to the school, he's one man, I understand that, you got a school board, I'm, I'm going to give you the information, you look at the information, and then you vote on whether I'm going to be able to, to have invite them.
Yeah, no, it doesn't really work that way, the superintendent and his, his administration go through the process, and they make a recommendation, which then the school board votes on.
Well, what, well, what are you guys there for?
Oversight.
Right, well, I'm going to, the whole idea is, I want to give you, if, you're the guy, don't you get it? I'm going to give you information, you're going to, I want you to look at it.
I, I understand that, Mr. Moore, I appreciate the information.
And then I want you to, and then I want you to approve of me, a, a time for these people to come here, and then you, you, well, otherwise, you guys are useless, you're telling me now.
We'll, we'll check it out, and then, Dr. Secor, if you could look into it, then, uh, we'll have them reach out to you.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you the information, I'm going to make sure they have it there, you got some members of your school board, and then I want you to discuss it, okay? Can you discuss it?
Mr. Moore, this is public participation, which, you're well past your, your time, we have other people that signed up to speak.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll tell you this, something happened to these kids over here, okay, you're going to eat it, not me, buddy.
You know, we'll, we'll look it over, we'll look it over, and we'll give it to Dr. Secor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Security is always part of our conversations. Security has been a major part of our conversations.
All right, Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, thank you, sir. Thank you. He, yes, guys, guys, easy, 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 thank you. Mr. Moore?
Give them the information now.
Yeah, you can leave it on the table, please, sir, thank you. Mrs. O'Connor, who do we have next?
You should be emotional about this, too.
Very.
Okay, I'm still feeling the pain of those kids, okay? Make sense? You should be emotional about it, you're not, something's wrong with you.
Mr. Moore, I've had several conversations with my nine-year-old about why, and what we could do to protect this stuff, so, yeah.
You don't want the answers in the cloud.
I get that, but also, but also, from, from talking to a child, and what they see, and, and what they're feeling, and, and the confusion, and the fear, so we're having those conversations, and we're making sure that we protect every child, we've been saying this for years, and it's, it's real, that our priority is to have a healthy and safe educational program, the best possible, whether the threats are, whether the threats are seen or unseen, okay?
This, unfortunately, you don't have a, I'm just saying this, you acknowledge how good that can help you.
Mr. Moore, we do, we do have a security front that we do it.
Mr. Moore, we appreciate your concern.
They make recommendations for us, we do appreciate you bring...
We do appreciate your concern, and, and we, we will look at it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moore, would you like your, I took this stuff out.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. O'Connor.
The next speaker is Mike Simonelli.
Good evening, how you doing?
All right, yourself?
All right, pretty good. Hi, I'm Mike Simonelli, and in response to my speech last month criticizing the district for promoting gender sexuality concepts, placing feelings over facts, Dr. Secor and four board members released a political letter stating it's your legal and moral obligation to protect our children. So regarding that obligation, I'm advising that your actions in affirming pronouns contrary to our children's biological reality is enabling those that are LGB or gender non-conforming on a path to serious mental and physical harm. Pronoun rituals are extremely effective at normalizing the abolition of biological sex in favor of gender identity. These rituals take advantage of people's compassion to achieve compliance, far from compassionate, supporting these rituals put our children on the pipeline from school to sterilization. There's two stages of gender transition, the first is social transition, and includes changing one's name and pronouns, the second is medical transition, and includes hormone therapy and surgeries, removing the breast and a hysterectomy, or removing the testes, and it's inverting the penis to create a vagina. Puberty blockers in these surgeries result in permanent infertility 100% of the time. A long-term study found transgender medical treatment shortens the patient's life by 50%. Other side effects include cancer, stroke, tumors, and bone density loss. The suicide rate among those who had reassignment surgery is 20 times higher than the rate among non-transgender. Now, 10 years ago, this wasn't an issue in schools, because traditionally, the majority of transsexuals were adult males, but something's changed. While there were hardly any scientific literature, before 2012, on girls age 11 to 21 ever having developed gender dysphoria, now over 80% of the youths identifying as having gender dysphoria are female. This new phenomenon is called rapid onset gender dysphoria, and it's led to concerns there's a social contagion taking place among girls, much like the self-harm and eating disorders more prevalent amongst them. Many of those affected suffer from anxiety, ADHD, autism spectrum traits, and depression. John Hopkins professor of psychiatry, Dr. McHugh, said gender dysphoria is a mental disorder, and policymakers are doing no favors to our self-identifying children by treating their confusion as a right in need of defending, rather than a mental disorder that deserves understanding, treatment, and prevention. It's a disorder similar to a dangerously thin female suffering anorexia who looks in the mirror and thinks they're overweight. Studies show 70 to 80% of kids expressing transgender feelings spontaneously lose those feelings over time. Here's what one young woman wrote about being led down the transgender path, "When I was 12, I found on the internet that young girls could be trans, and it would solve why I hated myself so much, why my life was so horrible. I'm going to tell you from experience, the coddling of transgender people and their delusions, you're going against fundamentals of nature and damaging yourself. No such thing as sex change, only sterilization. People won't want to date you, your health declines, your body suffers, your social life suffers." So please ask yourselves, how exactly are you protecting our children by affirming them along the path to hormone therapies or gender reassignment surgeries that many of them will regret for the rest of their shortened lives?" will regret for the rest of their shortened lives? Thank you.
You know, Mr. Simonelli, I, there's a lot of things that I understand that I don't understand, but what I do understand is, when we're told that LGBTQ youth are at a 40% higher risk of suicide, which I couldn't even imagine being in that position, whether it be as a person contemplating that, or a parent, if there's anything that we can do to help save somebody's life, we'll do that. And if it's something as simple as acknowledging how somebody is, great. If that's gonna make somebody feel accepted so that they're not going to commit suicide, like we've spoken about several times, that's the least we can do, as we speak about trying to create connections with every student in our district.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, is the compassion, you're trying to be affirming.
Obviously, we're not...
And the affirming is taking people from the social transition to the medical transition, which they end, they regret later, the ones that had gender dysphoria, the rapid onset. There's kids that start from very little and they have it, that's a whole different story. I'm not talking about them.
Mr. Simonelli, your time is over. Does anybody else want to add anything?
Mr. Simonelli, those are issues that we leave to the medical community. It's not for us to make those decisions. The only thing we're here for is to make sure that our children, every single one of them, feels welcome when they walk in the door, and feels a sense of belonging. And that's where our obligation is here as Board of Education members. And as long as I'm on the Board of Education, I will continue to make sure that we do our best to, to ensure that our children feel welcome when they walk in the door. And if that's calling them by a different name, or accepting their identity for the time being, absolutely, that's what we need to do, to make sure that those children live and survive the high school years, and that's what's most important to me.
Yeah, and that's a whole different story than telling other children to say biologically and genetically incorrect pronouns. I'm not saying to treat the kids any way differently, but you're dealing with them.
We're not really having a discussion right now. This is, this is public participation. We got three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We're just embracing what they want as an identity.
Thank you.
Nobody's telling them anything.
All right, folks, folks, he had his time, just like anybody else would have their time. Let's keep the comments. Thank you.
The next speaker is Rob Stretschmeyer.
Have a good night, Mr. Moore. How you doing tonight, Mr. Stretschmeyer?
I'm doing okay, thank you. I just want to gather my thoughts. I don't want to take any more of your time. My name is Robert Stretschmeyer, and I'm a physical education teacher here in the Smithtown School District for the past 23 years, as well as a coach for the past 18 consecutive years at all levels throughout the district. I'm here tonight to discuss my head coaching position for the varsity girls soccer program at Smithtown West, a position I held in the highest esteem for the past 13 consecutive years, a position that also brought me to where I currently teach today, which is at a comp set middle school. Where do I begin? I, I kinda, I know that, and with respect to the administrators I spoke to about this, and then listening to what the board's rule is in oversight, I just feel compelled to come here tonight and to really speak for myself, and some of the narrative that's kind of going around, around this position, in terms of how really I've been offered the position, and then that's since been rescinded because of some things that have transpired with my position. So I'll start basically where that began. During the COVID year, I lost my father. It was a difficult time. I didn't feel, well, I lost him January 31st. As you know, the fall sports season was pushed into the spring, so the timing of losing my father and being able to deal with some of those things was, was difficult. In the short time the season was pushed into the spring, and the small window of sort of finding someone to fill that position in a short amount of time, I just felt the responsibility to put, put those things aside and be there for the kids in that, that spring season. I did that. I didn't have my assistant that I had for 10 years because his position consequently was grieved out. So I had a first-year teacher that was in there, didn't, she did a fine job, but she didn't really provide the support that I needed. It was a difficult year, we got through it. That brought us into almost the exact day we're in now, which was last year, where when we finished the season, I realized I needed to take the time I needed for my family. When I expressed that to my athletic director, he understood. He gave me the grace I needed to take the time I needed, which was the fall season. The turnaround from that spring COVID year into the fall was only a few months. It was just not enough time for me to, to kind of do what I needed. Mr. Savaretti, I listened to what you said, and my story is certainly different than yours in terms of what I was going through, but I took my situation and I spoke to my athletic director. The next thing I did was I thought it was appropriate to speak to my captains and kind of get a feel of where they were. I sat in front of these girls, and I tried to convince myself that maybe I can do this. And much like yourself, I didn't think it was appropriate to put that raw emotion in front of kids. It just, it didn't feel right. So for the first time in 18 years, I, I thought, maybe I should put myself first here for once.
All right, Mr. Stretschmeyer, you're getting a little bit past that three minutes, if you want to finish up. Thank you.
Fair enough. I just, I'm here tonight because some of the narrative out there is that maybe that's untrue, on why I took the break. I was offered the break by Pat Smith, I accepted it. The next day, I went and spoke to my, my team about it. Everyone was aware. The following day, I sat with the two coaches that sat in the position, and I had the same speech that I had with my athletic director and I did with my captains. Everybody was on the same page that I was taking a leave for the year. When the fall season came about the next year, and it was over, Pat Smith called me, and he offered me the position back. I accepted. The coaches were made aware. Three months, three and a half months went by, and then I got a call basically saying that the job was no longer mine. And that's kind of where, where I'm at with this, to be offered a position, and with my standing in the community and my reputation, I kind of do what I say, say what I'm gonna do. And if I say I'm coming back, and, and I put it out into the community, to have that kind of rescinded from me, kind of took away some of that credibility I had and to do with my reputation.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to finish up, please. Thank you.
Very good. It's, it's hard to, to wrap it all up. I did send you a letter, and I did get a reply from some of you. Most of what I said tonight is in that letter, amongst some context. But in the end, I just, I just feel like there's, there's maybe more to this that you should know, maybe speaking to some of the integrity of some involved. I brought nothing but integrity to my position for the past 13 years, and I just feel like perhaps maybe I'm owed a little grace for that. That's really all I have. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry for your loss, and thank you for sharing your, your story.
I know, I, you know what, I'm not gonna take any more of your time, I know you've given enough. I just, I don't know if that came out right, but I really felt compelled to come tonight. I know there's a lot of support for me in this. It's very difficult for some of the people that support this to come up and speak, so I'm here doing that. With that said, I fully respect everybody that's up here and doing what they need to do. But, but quite honestly, I hope when it has to come to an outcome or a solution to this, that you can, you can see that I'm still willing to be here.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I, I know that I don't know you personally. I, I do know of your reputation, and just I want to thank you for all that you've done for our kids and our program, and I understand it's a very difficult situation that we really can't speak about here in a public session, but I want to thank you for all the work that you do for your kids, for our kids, and your dedication, and your stellar reputation.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kristen Robinson.
How you doing tonight?
I'm good, I'm hot. It is hot in here. We definitely do need air conditioning. So tonight, I wanted to talk about, I wanted to thank you for talking about the security, the physical safety of our children in light of the school shootings is very important. Thank you for talking about the suicide rate and the LGBTQ community, because that is also very important, the safety of our children's mental health. I'm concerned about the growing racism and homophobia in our community. There isn't a day that goes by that I don't hear of an incident happening at one of the schools in our community. We've had parents get up here and talk about their daughter being called the N-word 12 times in one month, or, you know, we're making national news. There's a news article about a student who is a thespian and, you know, was bullied, and it led to litigation. I suggest that we have a, you know, there's, you know, the, the theory of the tipping point where, you know, eventually a trend or social behavior crosses the threshold, tips and spreads like wildfire. This is what is happening. We're watching it in real time on TV while we're watching it in our community. Without clear boundaries and consequences, issues will keep happening, and they will grow like wildfire. When do we say that a racial slur or homophobic slur becomes hate speech? Is it when one student says it? Is it when two students? Is it when 20 students gang up on another student? We have to draw the line, and I think we should really adopt a zero tolerance policy, especially in high school, about using those, those terms. I think that we should have an, you know, an honor code or something that you sign at the beginning of the year, and you know the exact consequences for your actions. I'm not talking about elementary school, kids are still learning. I'm not talking about middle school, I'm talking about high school. I'm also talking about this forum. We can't let people who aren't medical professionals speak degradingly about people in our community. It's, it's not okay, and this is live, people are watching it, and it's harmful and dangerous. And I think that's all I had to say tonight, except I do agree with Karen and Stacy about the interim between when we get the air conditioners. We just need something to solve the problem, either like, I don't know, more fans or something, or cut the school day short, like, if it's gonna be over a certain temperature, it's just, it's too much. All right.
Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts and concerns. Appreciate it. Yes, Dr. Secor?
Yeah, I would like to comment on the, the piece you mentioned related to, you know, racism, homophobia. We do have clear boundaries and consequences, and they're outlined in the Dignity for All Students Act, and we certainly need to address them when they come up. And, you know, we're morally and legally bound to do just that. So we certainly do, you know, hold students accountable when they make poor choices. You know, and every situation is different, but we are duty-bound to hold students accountable when they make those choices. Not only to, to understand that there are consequences, but there's also learning to be had, you know, and that work will never be enough, because these things still happen. And you said it, it's happening in real time in many forums, in many places, certainly not just Smithtown. But we are certainly very cognizant of our responsibility, and certainly ready, willing, and able to stand up to that responsibility.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Next speaker is Jaclyn Rooney.
How you doing tonight?
Good evening.
Still here.
Yes, last time I had to leave. In the future, maybe we can do the community speaking first, and letting you know about our concerns, rather than us sitting by and listening to you guys, you know, argue things that you can argue behind closed doors. The first thing I want to say, I was here to speak about school safety, but after that disgusting little speech that we just had to listen to, I think we need to, once, I need my Smithtown students, if you're looking, if you're watching, if you see this later, people do not think like that. You have allies, you have parents in this community that love you, that are standing by you, and people like the one we just heard are in the minority. I just want you to know that. Because a child is gonna listen to that and completely feel worse than they probably already do with a world that, you know, hurts them more than we should. On that note, I recently emailed all of your requesting that you revisit the Smithtown School Safety Plan, so that it includes different measures that may secure the internal safety of Smithtown schools. I thank the board members who responded to me regarding the matter, as well as Dr. Simmons, for listening to all of my concerns. My hope was that it might at least begin a dialogue on the matter. As I mentioned in my letter, requiring that all classroom doors remain closed and locked throughout the school day has made all the difference in the past as to who survived the school shooting and who didn't. Smithtown School Safety Plan currently mentions nothing about closed and locked doors. Well, locked doors, but not closed doors. I expressed in my letter the failure by many schools where mass shootings had taken place to administer their lockdown drill and alert the school that a gunman was in the building, and how it left little time for teachers to try to close the door before he approached their classroom. I've read reports of every school mass shooting that has taken place in this country, and the simple act of keeping interior doors closed and locked was what kept people alive. Yesterday, another school shooting took place at a summer camp in Duncanville, Texas. Thankfully, no one was harmed, and the police were able to kill the gunman. The police also reported, however, that the gunman attempted to enter a classroom with kids inside, but that door was locked. That locked door saved lives. We can try to secure the entry into all of our buildings as much as we can, put cameras everywhere we can, get more security, but if God forbid a gunman finds a way into the building, there should be a second line of defense protecting our children. The reason I was given for why keeping doors closed was a difficult, difficult task was the rising temperature of classrooms in the warm months of the school year. As a teacher myself, I definitely understand what that's like, but we're living in a different time where real threats exist, and I would choose the heat for a couple of months a year over placing myself and the children I serve in harm's way. And if the heat is such a concern, maybe this community needs to step up and try to get central air into, into the Smithtown schools. I know the amount of money it will cost, but likely, I already mentioned to all of you, that what price do we have to place on the safety and protection of our children? I think from what we've witnessed in all the school shootings that have happened, the mass murder of innocent children is an impossible way to bear. And could we truly look ourselves in the mirror and honestly say we did everything we could to make sure our kids were safe?
Mrs. Rooney, you're getting a little bit past that three minutes, if you want to finish up.
Mr. over there had 10 minutes. Can I just read one more thing?
Please.
I asked again, I will ask you again, that you consider reevaluating Smithtown School Safety Plan, and take this one request seriously to minimize the potential threat that now exists in our nation's schools. It is our job as the adults to protect our children, and by not taking the basic precautions seriously, I would say without a doubt that we would have failed miserably. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. We are constantly evaluating, reevaluating the district's safety plan for threats both seen and unseen, and I know that it's something with Dr. Secor presented before about upgrades that we're, we're making now as a recommendation from our security, and we'll continue to have, always have those conversations on how we can improve to deal with threats that, possibilities, and we'll take the recommendations from the professionals that we have here.
You know, can I just comment on something that you said about, it has nothing to do with school safety, but can we maybe in the beginning of each meeting, read what the items that can be discussed behind closed doors in executive session are, so that the community is reminded? Because sometimes it's, if you're not in it and you don't know what it is, they, people might not realize what we're allowed to discuss behind closed doors, and that some things we're not allowed to discuss behind closed doors, and we do have to talk about it out here, whether there's disagreements or not. So maybe we could add that in the beginning? Is it too long to read?
Yeah, well, we usually say that at the beginning when we first go into executive session, we tell the reasons, the reasons that why we're going into executive session.
But I mean to tell everybody reason, what we're allowed to talk about at executive session. Like, you give the reasons as to why we're going there, but there are certain topics that have to be spoken about there, and everything else must be done in public. So maybe, you know, just educating everyone so they understand.
There are things, it is on the agenda, as Mrs. O'Connor said, but there's also things that...
On every agenda, under executive session, it leaves, it gives all of the reasons one through 10.
Okay.
In the public content, if you click on adjourn to exec session, it lists all of that and the reasons why you can...
Well, I know that, I'm just saying the community, we need to know that.
I'm telling you, it's on the public agenda, every, under...
But at the same time, when you have people...
Yes, I understand, I'm just glad the community could hear you say that.
That are willing to work in good faith together, that a lot of these discussions are handled outside, and so, just putting that out there also. Without any further business, oh, we have one more, excuse me, Mrs. O'Connor, I'm sorry.
Marie Gargente, I'm not sure if she's still here. She left.
All right, that's it. All right. I want to thank everybody for staying here past 11, appreciate it, and hopefully you got some good information from this meeting. With that being said, I can make a motion to adjourn. Second, discussion, all who's in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Have a good night, Smithtown.